Okay, um, how we doing for attendance here? Let's see, I'll call them, uh, Wareham Planning Board. For Monday, January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two to order, and can I have a roll call? Uh, I see Sam, I see Carl. Mike King, are you there? Hi, Mike. Um, Michael Baptiste, are you there?
I'm here, but I don't see you, though. Can you hear me?
You can hear us, I can hear you.
So I'm trying to turn on my camera here.
Alright, so we have all five members, Mr. Mr. Buckland, are you there?
Click on that.
Hey, yes, I'm here, just for Mr. Baptiste, make sure that the, uh, on the actual camera, it's not covering, like, there's a little, so you have to slide it over, make sure it's not covering that. Like, on the, yeah, there you go.
Richard, what about Jane? I didn't see her.
Hey, how can I get rid of this guy here? I want to go back to the big screen.
Yeah, go ahead and cover over that.
Jane will not be here tonight.
Just click on it.
Mr. Rowley, are you there? Mr. Charles Rowley, are you in tonight?
There you go. Thank you, Dave.
Yep. Okay, so all members are present, all full-time members are present, uh, Miss, uh,
Alright, I'm gonna roll out, you're good.
Jane is not, Jane Gleason is not here tonight, and Mr. Shaheen is here, so. Um, let me read my mission statement. The Wareham Planning Board is the land use board whose primary purpose is to provide for and guide the orderly growth and development of the town of Wareham. The Wareham Planning Board will oversee and administer the land use projects that fall under the jurisdiction of the Wareham Planning Board with three primary objectives, as to ensure the public safety, interest, and welfare of the citizens of Wareham, the proper application of our state and local laws, regulations, and procedures regarding land use, and safeguard the land use rights of Wareham property owners. Those state and local laws, regulations, and procedures which have been established by the voters of Wareham and their elected representatives include the Wareham Bylaws, the Wareham Zoning Bylaws, the zoning act pursuant to the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-eight, the Wareham Rules and Regulations governing the subdivision of land and the subdivision control law pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-one. Other functions of the Planning Board include the consideration and preparation of town zoning bylaws for submission to a town meeting warrant and the development maintenance of the Wareham Master Plan. The Wareham Planning Board is anxious to work with the citizens of Wareham as our town evolves, and we encourage all citizens to familiarize themselves with our state and local laws, regulations, and procedures to help us provide for and guide the orderly growth and development of the town of Wareham. That mission statement is on the Wareham Planning Board website, and at the bottom of that statement are links to all those laws that I, uh, just referenced. With that, I'll go to Planning Board news. Um, I have some news. Uh, we've done some updates to the webpage. Uh, many of you will have noticed that the Planning Board Projects tab was down for a little while, while some maintenance was done on it. Yeah, but it's back up, and that's good, uh, but we've also um, added a proposed zoning articles tab and a Wareham Planning Board docu-documents tab, uh, that are proposed. This Planning Board has been working at workshops, um, hard on, uh, several uh, different documents around escalation procedures, inspection procedures, public hearing guidance, uh, article, an Article fifteen rewrite, you can see.
Yeah.
You could, you can, uh, see where we're at on these proposals, we will have a public hearing on all of them, when the time is right. Um, but for now, we're not going to schedule that, we may schedule it in an off-cycle workshop meeting to do that, uh, that public hearing. Um, any members have any news they wish to talk to? Alright, that being said, let's go to preliminary business, so first on the agenda is thirty-seven twenty-one, a definitive subdivision plan known as Tobias Way. Um, we closed the public hearing, oh, hello, Charlie. We closed the public hearing at our last meeting, um, Aaron's been working really hard with, uh, some of us board members, uh, putting together a certificate of approval, um, gonna, in a format and that we can use as a template going forward for all of our subdivision certificates of approval. Um, been working with the applicant as well, Aaron, I think it would be wise if, uh, you shared where we were on that, is the applicant here?
Yes, I'm here.
Alright, hi, Christian, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, um, you've been working with Aaron and your engineering team on the conditions that we've, um, that we've proposed for the certificate uh, of approval?
I've only been working with Sam, I have not worked with Aaron yet, but I have been with Sam from J.C. Engineering.
Okay, alright, so, uh, Aaron, if you don't mind, would you run, uh, the board and the, uh, public through where we're at with that?
Yeah, I can do that, um, so I've been in contact, um, with Sam, also with Ken. Um, we have a draft covenant that is pretty much done, um, the certificate approval is also done as well, um, they updated, there is a one-site plan um, requirement update on there, um, that they got into me today, they submitted their Mylar along with two copies of the plan to the office, um, but, you know, as far as getting it signed, if we were all in person, I would say it'd be able to be signed tonight, but since that's not happened, able to happen, um, I'd say you could vote on the approval if you'd like, uh, I don't know if Sam's here to talk, but, and then we could get the signing, have you guys come to the office and, you know, sign when you're available to do that, but, uh, looks like it's all set to go now, it's just executing what we have and getting this done.
So would you mind sharing your screen with the COA, the latest and greatest, I don't think I have, I may not have the latest and greatest one?
Yeah, let me, um, get this right here.
We need to, we need to, uh, vote to, on waivers, and we need to vote to rescind an existing subdivision on one of these lots tonight as well, right?
Correct. Oh, it's opening up right now.
Uh, while we're waiting for Aaron, are we going to deal with this street name tonight, or is that going to be scheduled separately?
Um, I looked up Tobias Way in the, uh, road list, and there isn't one, so I don't know that there's an issue, Carl.
We have to vote on it, and, uh, I thought there was an issue that Charlie raised about, uh, who needed to review it and comment, which I can't remember, but Charlie's there.
Uh, alright, tell, tell me here, I'm not aware of an issue right now.
Is Charlie there?
Yes, he is, Charlie, you're muted.
The only thing I suggested was that they should check with the nine-one-one coordinator to be sure that that name is okay.
How you doing, Aaron?
Um, it's opening up right now, sorry. Um, okay.
Okay, Richard, we're satisfied on that, then, we'll vote on the street name tonight.
Um, help me, yeah, I need some help on this process here, we have to do, we have to vote on the street name, I thought that was inclusive with the subdivision approval.
I think it's a separate approval. I, I'm open to that, I, I thought there were two separate approvals.
I don't know that we've ever done, and I've never done one of those before.
Yes, we, we actually did for, um, the road off of Mather's Drive, that Jackie came and talked about.
Uh, that was a different issue, that wasn't a subdivision.
No, but it was a street.
Yeah, that's all it was. You can vote on the whole thing at once.
Right.
We're gonna do it that way, so go ahead, Aaron.
Um, so, yeah, so, uh, there were some changes made to the C-one form, which is the certificate of approval for subdivision plans. Um, we did this because we wanted to, um, make it a little simpler, make it look easier to read. Um, so you can see that, you know, we have the name of the subdivision, the petition number, um, map and lot, who prepared it, the dates of everything, um, the address, so all that information that's pertinent to the subdivision. Um, there's a part here that talks about the covenant, um, which goes along with the certificate approval that's signed after the, uh, twenty-day appeal period and approved by the board, and with the applicant as well, with, like I said, we had been working on that, um, so that's good to go as well, just timing for that situation. Um, there, so this is just some more language relevant to kind of talking about the appeal period and, uh, some other things here.
Aaron, you need to, you need to scroll your document.
Is it moving down for you guys?
No.
Go to the other way.
Is it going down now?
No.
Alright, hold on, it's, maybe it's just taking a minute to go, hold on, because it's going down for me.
Wow, that's odd.
Wait, hold on, let me see here, oh, no, no, wait, alright, is this good now?
Yes.
Alright, sorry. Sorry about that, okay. Okay, here we are, so, as you can see, like,
Just lost it.
I think we lost Aaron.
Aliens.
System has the virus.
So, while he's coming back, um,
I just had something to add, this is Christian Tobias.
Yeah, hi, Christian, go ahead.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, I have issues with my mute and unmute, um, I've already spoke to the nine-one-one coordinator, and they said there shouldn't be an issue with that name, there's no issue with that name.
Alright, good, good, um, I have, um, a copy, I'm not sure this is the latest and greatest. Hold on, Aaron's pinging me. Hi, tech's great, huh? Uh, can people see this form here?
Yeah.
Okay, so, we did do an update to try to make it more readable and more understandable, we consolidated, uh, several different uh, documents into one, so it, this is ident, this identifies the property. Um, talks about endorsement, give, getting a copy to the Registry of Deeds and to the Town Clerk. Uh, this is a list of waivers that we're going to vote on tonight. This is a list of conditions, in our template, we have a list of mandatory conditions, a list of optional conditions, and a place for, uh, conditions per site. Um, these are the conditions that Aaron's been working with the applicant on. This is a requirement here about any, any updates that are not in the current plan set, at the time that we vote will be updated, um, I believe these, um, these changes that we had asked for here have been made. Uh, we will have two decisions tonight, one to rescind an existing subdivision plan, and then the final overall approval. And then signatures, which a true copy attached is done by the Town Clerk, and tha- and that's what a certificate of approval looks like. So, um, Aaron, you're back.
Yeah, sorry, I think, uh, Ken and I are in the same account, so when he came on, it kicked me off real quick, but, yeah, you went through exactly what I was gonna say, um, I've been working with the applicant a lot, trying to make sure this gets done, you were correct in saying that they did update the plan with that requirement that's in there, um, so we have that Mylar at the office. Um, I know Mr. Rowley made another comment in regard to something else that they might want to add as well, he might be able to clarify that, but, um, looks good so far, just gonna need, uh, when we get people to sign it, you know, throughout the week in the office, if you, you know, plan to vote on it tonight.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Mr. Shaheen, I did not see the requirement we discussed about the plan sets and the electronic copy after recording at Plymouth. Didn't we discuss that as a condition? It, it scrolled fast, so I didn't, I couldn't see it.
Right now, it reads two physical, or the one I, what does yours have for con- condition number three, Aaron?
Is it about the, uh, physical copies, right?
Yeah.
And an electronic, and an electronic copy.
Yeah, so it's two physical copies and one electronic copy, um, submitted, you know, for the Registry of Deeds, that, that whole, that condition is still on that as well.
Thank you, I just, it scrolled so fast, I couldn't, I couldn't see it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um, so to the board, um, any comments or questions here? I, I'd like to move forward to the waivers then, um,
Before we, before we go forward, Richard, if we're going to include the street name in the approval, do we actually, it, it doesn't say that in, uh, the approval section, do we actually need to list that then? Because that has to get, I think it has to get filed.
It's on the plan, Carl. You're gonna, you're gonna approve the plan as the plan shows, subject to the waivers that you have listed.
So we don't have to file this, we don't have to file the street name form, which,
No, you don't.
The old form said we did, but okay, thank you.
We're not changing street names, this is a brand-new one, so it's a different, different idea.
Okay, uh, moving forward, um, here, uh, last call for comments on the, uh, certificate of approval. Okay, waivers, I'm gonna try to do this all at once, there were seven waiver requests, a waiver for installing streetlights, uh, street trees, sidewalks, concrete curbing, fire alarms, and, and, uh, waiver for the eighteen-foot wide road and use a twelve-foot wide road instead. Uh, waiver number six was for not to have to install sewer, and that waiver wasn't required because there is not a town sewer hookup available. For the, uh, public that's listening, this particular subdivision is creating a lot behind, um, the existing home. Um, the road that's being built is more of a driveway than a road, hence, um, these waivers were requested, and there hasn't been any, um, negative pushback on them, so uh, what I'd like to do, board members, is, uh, ask for a motion to approve um, waivers one through five and seven, all in one motion, does anyone have a problem with that before I move forward?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just one comment, um, just include, there's one extra waiver that, um, was added, it might be on your version, but it's related to the, uh, the dead-end turn at the end, I can read it out to you, that was added to it.
Um, you have it in the COA?
I have it in the COA, yes.
And it's number eight around the dead-end turn?
Yeah, it's a waiver, um, for the dead-end turned around having an outside diameter of a hundred feet, um, a turnaround has been provided, and it was accepted by the fire department.
Um, Christian, you're good with this?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so, um, I would accept a motion to uh, approve the waivers for the Tobias Way subdivision for number one, and not having to install streetlights, number two, not having to install street trees, number three, not having to install sidewalks, number four, uh, not having to install concrete curbing on both sides of the road, uh, number five, not having to install fire alarms, number seven, not having to have an eighteen-foot wide road, but waived it down to twelve feet, and number eight, requirement for a dead-end turnaround. Do I have, uh, someone to make that motion for me?
Oh, move.
Second, I have a motion by Mr. Corbett and a second by Mr. King, I'll call for a roll call vote, Mr. King.
Hi.
Mr. Baptiste.
Hi.
Mr. Mr. Schultz.
Hi.
Mr. Corbett.
Hi.
Mr. Swenson votes aye, so the waivers are past five to zero. Um, the next thing we need to do is we need to rescind an existing subdivision plan. So I would accept a motion to resi- to rescind existing subd- uh, subdivision granted to Robert Brigretti in nineteen seventy-four for lot one oh two-two, and recorded in the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds and Plan Book eighteen, page one thirty-five. Can, can someone make that motion, please?
Oh, move.
I have a motion by Mr. Corbett, do I have a second?
Aye.
I have a second by Mr. Schultz, and I'll call for a roll call vote, Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Baptiste.
Aye.
Mr. Schultz.
Aye.
Mr. Corbett.
Aye.
And Mr. Swenson votes aye, so the motion to rescind, rescind the existing subdivision has been granted. Um, how we doing, Aaron?
We are, we're doing good, you just got one more to go.
Okay, I, this is the final overall approval, and that the Tobias Way subdivision is in compliance with the Wareham subdivision rules and regulations, town bylaws and zoning bylaws, so I would accept a motion to approve the subdivision application for the subdivision known as Tobias Way, with all waivers and conditions listed herein.
Oh, move.
I have a motion by Mr. Corbett and a second by Mr. Schultz, Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Baptiste.
Aye.
Mr. Schultz.
Aye.
Mr. Corbett.
Aye.
And Mr. Swenson votes aye, it's five zero zero. Okay. Um, we will all need to sign uh, this form, as you remember, um, several months ago, we made a change to our signature policy where, um, all voting members that vote in the affirmative for a permit or subdivision plan shall sign, um, said plan, so, uh, Aaron has a piece of paper, there's room for all five of us to sign, and we need to drop by town hall and do that. Um, for, for a future meeting that's not so busy, I think we might want to revisit that decision we made, to make it a little more, uh, simple. Um, and by the way, while I get, while I, while we're here, uh, Aaron, the true copy attached by the Wareham Town Clerk um, does not, she does not need any signatures in front of her.
Okay, I will make, Aaron, is that it more a statement or a question?
No, that's a statement, I talked to her, or I, I emailed with her.
Okay, sounds good, I'll make a note of that.
Yeah, what she, what the true copy attached is exactly that, she's attesting that she has a true copy of the official document done by the Planning Board, and the Planning Board is responsible to make sure it's all accurate. So, that's how that goes down, she's, she was very helpful. Um, I don't think we have anything else to do on Tobias Way. We have to, the Town Clerk will now take this, start a twenty-day clock for an appeal period, and at the completion of that appeal period, we can sign the Mylar. Um, do I got that right?
Yep, you're doing good.
So, um, from, from matter of form going forward, I would suggest that applicants, they might want to hold off on printing Mylars until we're leased into the appeal period, just to make sure there could, there could always be a change that happened tonight that would, uh, you know, require them to redo them, so, um, but, that's totally up to them. Um, Mr. Rowley, do you know of anything else that this board needs to do regarding Tobias Way, you, you know this process better than anybody?
So I'm muted.
He's muted right now.
I'm gonna, uh, Charlie, you're on mute.
There we go.
I had a question.
Just, just make sure the, just make sure the covenant is signed along with the plan, that's all.
Um, and that's done after the appeal period, right?
That's correct.
That's, alright, so, good, I think we're done for tonight. Uh, Christian, is there anything I can do for you, or do you, you need from this board right now?
No, we're, we're good, thank you.
Alright, thank you, you've been very cooperative, and I appreciate your patience with us.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Alright, alright. Um, let's move on, and still in preliminary business. Item one dash twenty-two, this is an A and R at Fearing Hill Road, um. Now, I'm going to share this. If I can find it, there we go. Can people see this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is Joe Shanahan from Con Ed.
Hi, Joe.
I, 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 you've got a very busy agenda, so I might make this one easy for you. Uh, there was a complete misunderstanding on the part of the landowners of this site, for which we have a lease, and this should not have been filed, and therefore, we'd request that it be withdrawn this evening.
That does make things easier.
Not necessarily for me, Mr. Chairman, but for the board, yeah.
I, I, I understand, and I don't have to ask, I don't have to ask if you're gonna update your your current site plan review with the new, uh, lot lines, so.
Correct.
Okay, so, Aaron, did you take note that, um, that this A and R one dash twenty-two has been withdrawn by the applicant, um, through Mr. Sheehan, I'm sorry, Mr. Shanahan?
And Aaron, I'll get that to you in writing first thing tomorrow morning.
Sounds good, thank you so much.
Okay, let's move on, we have, uh, two sets of continued public hearings. Um, the first set, under item four on the agenda, items one through nine are all subdivision applications that had a preliminary subdivision, uh, preliminary subdivision plan presented to this board and approved, and now, and now, um, have been followed up with definitive subdivision plans uh, for the sole purpose of freezing zoning prior to the June twelfth, twenty twenty-one, uh, Wareham Town Meeting. And we have been working with, um, um, a lawyer for eighty makepeace to try to come up with a process that would allow the applicant, mainly this board and the engineering staff for Wareham, not have to go through a meaningless, uh, subdivision process, um, and still protect the citizens and, um, allow the applicant to accomplish their only goal of to freeze the zoning, so. Um, the, the process would be that the subdivision plan that has, as was presented, um, I'm not sure if it's gonna be modified, if the road, uh, diagram, or that the road's gonna be modified or not, we're gonna find out tonight. But it would be approved with a, with, uh, a limited set of conditions in a certificate of approval, and after the twenty-day period, appeal period, a covenant would be, um, would be agreed to, which basically says that any development on this site, other than a pre-approved, uh, solar site plan review, or agriculture, or conservation in the case of the one forty and one fifty and, uh, Tohonton Road and twenty-seven Charge Pond Road, which already have an approved plan, there, the other six do not have an approved plan, so they would only be approved for agriculture and conservation. Um, and any, in any, uh, construction would be, acquire a full site plan review at the Wareham Planning Board. So, Mr. Sampson, are you there?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, before we proceed.
Yes.
Have, have we got written guidance from, uh, Attorney Bowen?
I'm not sure I was gonna get there.
Oh. So we, we're gonna deal with that, uh, case by case?
Well, we, we are going to, right now, have Mr. Sampson talk to, um, as an applicant, uh, representing the, the covenant that's being proposed, to explain it from the applicant's perspective.
And, but each covenant is gonna, I'm confused, I don't understand how this is gonna work.
Well, that's okay, um, the, the, why don't we, why don't we let Mr. Sampson go through, and maybe some of your questions will get answered.
But, okay, are we gonna do that for each app, application? Well, okay, because they're not all the same.
No, they're not all the same, they're, they, they are slightly different and unique to each, each subdivision app, uh, uh, plan.
Okay, one of them is requesting waivers, are we gonna approve those waivers?
We'll have to go through each one, alright?
I'm, okay. I'll wait, alright, thank you, Mr. Sampson.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman and, and members of the board, um, Gregory Sampson, I'm an attorney with Wumble Barn Dickinson. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and, and members of the board. Um, Gregory Sampson, I'm an attorney with Wumble Barn Dickinson. I, I'm here representing um, the applications by AD Makepeace uh, in connection with Borrego Solar, and these are uh, items forty dash twenty-one, forty-one dash twenty-one, forty-two dash twenty-one, and forty-three dash twenty-one on your agenda. Uh, so it's the first four of these um, subdivision plan filings. Um, and you, you did outline essentially uh, a lot of the information that we had been in discussions with, with the town uh, in which we were hoping to uh, pre- present a process to allow for approval of the definitive subdivision plans uh, subject to certain restrictions that would be protective of the town, but also would be uh, we would allow for uh, less review um, for roadways that hopefully will not ever be built. Um, and essentially, the, the covenant process is one we, we looked at as, as a part of the subdivision control law process that allows the landowner to impose certain conditions um, on the release of lots that are created by a subdivision plan. And these, the covenant would allow us to self-impose a restriction on the uses associated with these lots shown on the plan. Um, and any other use would require a modification to the plan approval and the covenant to give the town an opportunity to do a full review of stormwater and infrastructure. Um, so we have gone back and forth with uh, the town with a draft form of covenant, which we have generally outlines the, the steps that we have, you know, the conditions we would impose on the approvals um, to, to be, to, to, uh, remember Schultz's question, I'm not quite sure if that has had the benefit of town council's input, and we're happy to work with town council to, to finalize it. It would be nice um, to know from, that the board members are all in favor of this approach as well. I think, you know, the benefit, and, and we have had conversations with Charlie and others, um, the benefit is, it, it alleviates the town from a burden of reviewing these plans that likely will never get built from an infrastructure perspective, but provides a way by which these can be approved and allow the zoning freeze to be secured. Um, we're very confident that if we need to process the plans in another mechanism, we could do so in a manner to achieve the zoning freeze, but that also recognizes it's a excessive use of the town's uh, review and the board's time and engineering review and cost and process. So, the, the negotiation that we've, you know, the, the approach we've come up with, we think is a, is a win-win for the town and the applicants, and it, it just maintains the condition, the approvals that we have in place on several of the sites um, that made AD Makepeace had permitted previously. I'll stop there and pause and ask, you know, I know there's questions. Again, I can't speak to all of the processes, but my understanding is the hope would be to mimic a similar type of process for other applicants, but I, I'm here specifically on the first four.
Um, at, at the, at this point, let me just ask, is there any representatives here for the Rocky Maple Lane subdivision application? Is there anyone here for the Antero Energy at three seventy County Road?
I'm, I'm here for Rocky Maple.
Oh, and who's that?
Charles Leroy.
Hi, Charles.
Good evening.
Um, I should say to everyone, it's my understanding that the planning offices have distributed to um, each of these applicants um, a copy of this draft covenant that we want to use to move forward. Uh, I'm assuming that you, that you all have it? Is there anyone that doesn't? Okay, um, Antero Energy, three seventy County Road, Care of Prime Engineering, is there someone here for that?
Yes.
And, and that is who?
Uh, Aaron Riordan.
Okay. So, Charles, let me back up a second. I'm, I'm sorry, Aaron. Charles, did you have any comments, questions, or points you wanted to bring to this uh, to this public hearing?
Uh, yes, I had a few. I submitted to Mr. Buckland a proposed markup. I think the only substantive question is in paragraph four that limits the uses of the land. And, so, i-if we all went through the process of a full definitive subdivision plan approval, the use of, the entire zoning would be frozen for eight years. So, any use that's allowed today could be done without any further review other than what the zoning requires. And so, we would like to preserve that flexibility, giving up the non-residential, sorry, giving up the ability to do residential development. But, let's say, for example, in a couple of years, we want to change the layout of the solar arrays because of things we discovered during construction or changes in technology, we would have to go back to the planning board in its capacity as site plan approval authority to get the revised site plan approved, but we should not have to go to the planning board to modify the subdivision.
That's a good legal question. I think, uh, I would assume you are right on the surface, but I'm not a legal expert. Um, I would personally lean on the site plan review, uh, major minor modification process to deal with something like that, not subdivision. But I, that's, that's a question, I think, if, if Ken has that, it's one that we'll take up with our town council.
The, the case you might direct your council to is called Massachusetts Broken Stone versus Town of Weston. And there, the original subdivision plan was, I believe, for a residential project, and ultimately, they changed their mind to do an office complex, and the Supreme Judicial Court said what is frozen is the zoning with respect to the land, and you could, the use does not matter. You can change what you want to do. You can build something. It's entirely different from what's shown on the subdivision plan. That, that, that's how.
Did you reference that case in your note to Mr. Buckland?
I didn't. I sent him a proposed markup of the covenant, but I, I hadn't done anything beyond that.
Would you mind sending him a cop, uh, that, uh, that reference?
Happy to.
Thank you. Alright, Aaron, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Uh, any comments, questions, or concerns you'd care to bring up tonight?
Uh, no, not as yet. My, uh, client's internal counsel's still reviewing it, but uh, preliminarily, no, we do not have any comments.
Okay, um, is there anyone here for LSC Tukana, one, one and one thirteen North Carver Road, Care of Prime Engineering?
Yep, that's also me, Aaron Riordan.
Any, I assume no, do you have any comments?
Nope, no comments.
Alright, and then, um, Joe, you, are you here for Fearing Hill still?
I am, Mr. Chairman.
Could, do you have any comments, questions, or concerns you'd care to bring up?
My comments were more articulately covered by Attorney Leray than I could have done it myself, but we're familiar with the same SJC case, and uh, we'll be interested to see what the response is. That pretty much summarized what our concern was.
Alright, good. This is.
You don't even pay him, Mr. Chairman.
That worked out good. And um, North Carver Road, LSC Hydrith, um, Care of GAF Engineering. Is anyone here representing them?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Bob Rogers.
Hi, Bob.
I'm, Chairman, uh, so, we've received the document, um, we've shared it with our client, but we have not yet had a chance to review it with our client. So, it all seems positive, and uh, we just want to make sure that we have, uh, you know, we have get it reviewed by either their counsel or, or otherwise, um, you know, make sure that uh, it, it suits uh, our particular piece of property.
Okay, um, board members, any comments, questions, or concerns that you'd care to bring up?
What is exactly that we're acting on tonight on this?
When, I don't think we're gonna be acting on anything tonight.
Okay, good. That was gonna be my concern.
Yeah, I think, um.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, who's this?
This, this is Greg Sampson. Um, I, I will say, our expectation is to, to make a ma-modification to the plan we prepared um, to show a slightly different, uh, less um, significant roadway. Um, and we would submit that, so we anticipate, we'd like to request a continuance um, tonight for the four matters that I have on the agenda. I assume other, others may feel the same way, um, but in the meantime, we could also uh, proceed with getting Ken's final review of the, the additional changes and working with town council as necessary.
Yeah, it, it is my expectation that we will need to continue all of these, um, at least one more session.
I would agree with that.
Um, I think we're really close to where we, where, where we need to get. The only stumbling block I see right now is that the valid question of when it comes time to actually do something with these uh, parcels of land and a modification is required, um, it would only be from a site plan review perspective versus a subdivision perspective, which would, which would make sense, but we need to confirm that. Um, uh, so what I would like to do then. Chairman, are you gonna get comments from the rest of us, or have you closed out comments? No, I just, I just asked for planning board member comments. Oh, yeah, but then, okay, I thought you were summarizing. I'm sorry. No, I just kind of summarizing where, where I think this is going. I think that the, that next weekend, we might be able to get pretty close. So, I will take comments from planning board members, and then we'll have public input.
So, my comment would be, I'm very uncomfortable with the process until I understand how it's gonna work, uh, cause I don't yet. Uh, I, I need to understand, are all of the applicants signing the same covenant? And I haven't seen the covenant yet, so I don't know what's being proposed. So, I would, I think we should have the opportunity to see that uh, before we, before we vote on the final process, and.
Uh, can I interrupt for a minute, Carl? I'm, if you haven't been given a copy of the draft covenant, uh, then we've messed up, because it's been, it's been floating around for about six weeks.
Does everybody else have it, and I'm the only one who doesn't?
Isn't that, if, if you look at the uh, forty dash twenty-one, there's, there's a copy of the covenant there.
Oh, I wasn't looking for it there. I was looking for it in the other. Okay, so I'll go review it in forty dash twenty-one, uh, but it's not in the other, uh, it's not in the other ones.
So, um, Carl, I will uh, work, I will, I'll, I'll be seeing you tomorrow, and I will make sure that you have a copy of everything. Let me uh, also state clearly that while uh, we've, we've been working on a covenant for uh, one forty To Hone Road, uh, is our intent to use that as a boilerplate for all the other ones, and they will be ver, they will be similar, but they will, they will not be exactly the same, and they will be specific to each of the subdivisions that have been, the definitive subdivision plans that have been submitted.
I, I, I don't know how I missed that that draft covenant was out there for us to review.
I'm sorry. Well, we'll catch up tomorrow.
Okay, and then, uh, then my last question is that then we'll deal with waivers that have been requested?
Um, I have to admit, uh, Carl, I'm not familiar with any waivers on these, on these nine subdivision plans.
Uh, forty-seven twenty-one, Fearing Hill has two requests for waivers.
Okay.
There's two, right, Mr. Shanahan? Two? Mr. Shanahan, through you to Mr. Shanahan.
We may have lost it.
Okay, I believe there are two waivers requested in that application.
Alright, I, let's, uh, let's verify tomorrow and reach out to the applicant and make sure we get clear, clarity on that. I have to admit, I didn't read each one in detail. I probably should have.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make one comment.
Yeah.
Um, just for, for Carl as well, each of these will have their own covenant and COA, so like, as far as waivers and stuff, that's something um, when we draft the COAs, we can include in there, because they might be specific to each one, um, and things like that. So, we'll, we'll get a hand on that. I'm gonna work on the covenant and the COAs after today, but, because it seems like, um, like the chairman said, next meeting, we're probably gonna either be there or very, very close.
Those are my concerns. Once I understand the process, then I'll be ready.
Okay, um, so we can open this to the public then, and if any other board members have any comments before I do that?
No.
Okay, I will now open the public hearing for public comment, and to the public, please keep in mind the following. Purpose of the public hearing is for citizens to have an opportunity to provide input to the board on the projects being considered. Comments are limited to three minutes, which can be extended by the chair. The public is requested to only bring new information to the board's consideration and not repeat information that has already been provided. Any questions from the public must be directed to the chair, who will determine if the question is appropriate, and if so, determine if there is a spokesman to answer it. And it's not the purp, I want people to understand clearly, it's not the purpose of the public hearing for the board to explain the law or educate the public on the law, or to provide legal opinion. That being said, I am going to open for public input on all nine continued public uh, hearings as a whole in the sake of expediency, productivity, and time, um, given that they're all the same. So, with that, um, who's managing the uh, Zoom tonight?
I'm, I'm managing the Zoom.
Alright, if there's, uh, do we have anyone raising their hands or desperately waving at us?
I don't see any hand raises, um, on the reactions. I don't see anyone desperately waving at us either. But if, just so people know, oh, we have, we have one people, one person, um, I see raising their hand, so they may, you and, I'm you and speak.
Good afternoon, good evening. Um, Chairman Swenson, this is Nancy McHale. Will this, um, draft covenant be available for the public to review? Because this is a huge difference in the process that people have gotten used to hearing, seeing, looking at.
Um, if, as, as Michael just indicated, you can see a copy of the latest one under forty dash twenty-one, um, definitive subdivision pla-plan for one forty To Hone Road.
Okay, and, and how is this titled? So, we'll make sure we're looking at the same thing.
It's, it's the second document from the bottom. It says covenant.
The, the word covenant is pretty, is pretty clear then. Um, is, is that continuously updated as changes are made to it? Or are there different versions on the site?
We keep, we try to keep the latest and greatest on the website.
Okay, so anything that's, that's already been knocked off is actually been taken off the site?
Yes.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. This is, um, very, very interesting and convoluted as it's just seems to be coming out of the blue at this point. But I appreciate trying to, to think about it.
Can I, um, Nancy, if you don't mind, can I, can I respond? Um, we're trying to, we're trying to follow the exact same process for a definitive subdivision plan. Um, only to the, but only to, from the point of view that a, a plan has been filed, and we want to approve it and get it recorded. And what the plan actually says is, is that here's a lot, um, a lot, some new lot lines for this property, but the covenant makes it clear that any type of construction that's gonna go on that property has to come back to the board for a full uh, subdivision review, a full site plan review, if so called for. It's, it's just a placeholder to um, accomplish the zoning freeze, which the only way they can do it is through a subdivision plan, which is a, a long arduous process, which is foolish for us to be wasting our time on. So, we're just trying to expedite it, uh, get a promise from the applicant that they won't do anything without coming back to the board, and the board feels safe that the citizens are protected. So, anyway.
No, I, I appreciate that, and I look forward to reading the draft covenant, and if there's any documents that um, anyone could put up on that site as well, that would help the citizens to understand it, that would be a great benefit. I appreciate that.
Good, so, one more thing, though, um, to the. One more thing, though, um to the to the public. When you read. When you read the covenant in uh listed under one forty to Honet Road. You will notice that it says that the allowed uses are agriculture. Um, conservation or a solar farm. Um, and and it will, it will reference the already approved site plan review that was done for one forty. Uh, three, the three of these subdivision plans. Are for uh properties that already have an approved solar farm site plan review done, one forty, one fifty to Honet and twenty-seven charge pond. The other six subdivisions do not. Uh, have uh an approved anything on them. And there, and when you read item number four. For them, it would read for agriculture or conservation only. Uh, it's a, it's an important distinction to understand, are you with me Nancy?
I think I am, but could you say that again?
I can. Three of these, three of these nine subdivision applications. Are for uh properties that already have an approved solar farm. What, and those are one, those are numbers one, two and three. On the on the agenda under uh under item four.
Right.
So their covenant will call out agriculture, conservation and your already approved uh solar farm site plan review. The other six will only call out agriculture and conservation as approved uses. Okay?
So that anything that is actually, because they're all. All of these I subdivisions, I believe are in chap- some sort of chapter sixty-one to start with. Which is why maybe the agriculture?
I I'm not sure of that.
Okay, all right, that's that's kind of irrelevant, but I appreciate knowing that nothing can be built. On it. Um, without that, um. And agriculture would would include something like new bogs?
Yeah, they're they're bogging out.
Okay.
Aaron, would you let Ms. Wertz in?
Thank you.
Thanks Nancy.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Tricia, you might be unmuted already, but you are free to speak now if you're if you're unmuted.
Thank you, good evening, everyone, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I echo some of what Nancy says and that this is a lot for citizens to. Um, digest, especially when we see nothing in writing about it to explain it to us. I heard just basically, other than totally not understanding. What you're doing, other than trying to save time, which may not necessarily be to the best benefit of the citizen. Um, the one other place piece I heard is that within certain circumstances. The people who are um owners of the. The site plan and the property may have their rights to change, may have a right to change how they use it, use it. On their own conditions without telling. Anything to the town or anything else, and I have a, I have a concern about that, especially when and if the properties. Um, border residents, so.
I'm sorry, Trish, can I interrupt?
You can, you're gonna anyway.
Probably true, but I. Uh, did I hear you say that you believe that? These applicants have the right to make changes on their own without coming back to town?
That's what it sounded like you said.
That I said, I said just the opposite.
Okay. So they have no right to change how they're gonna use the the layout without coming further in front of you?
That's right.
Okay, sorry for misunderstanding.
Yeah, that's the whole point of this. That's the whole point, you know, go ahead, freeze your zoning. But when you, if you wanna do anything, you gotta come back and and go through the full entire one hundred percent, no, no rock unturned process that you would anyway.
And what I may have heard is that one of the folks that's. That spoke had a an a proposed waiver that would allow that. And and so when I look also at taking the whole list of these and treating them as a a plug and play. Um, depending on what the waivers are and the other exceptions that the um. People ask for. I don't know how you can handle this as a plug and play. So I guess I'm sitting with Nancy trying to just to digest this whole piece of information.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome, any other, any other ones to talk, Aaron?
I got no more, no one, oh, we actually, we have a. Somebody might have just had their hand up. Actually, no, I got, oh, we have, yeah, Faith, uh Barry, she has her hand up, looks like she wants to speak, so you. Can unmute Faith, um and feel free to talk.
Thank you very much, Ken, and I appreciate the time to share a little bit. Um, I, you know, it it's, I echo what Tricia and Nancy said, this is uh. Somewhat confusing because what I'm seeing on the town um records, the. Plats that are being considered show subdivision on, for example, off of Maple Springs Road. So it's it's all surveyed into plots for houses with a cul-de-sac. And the name of the street is called Cranberry Drive. So that's a little concerning when I see something like that, so. Um, it would be good to have some of this in writing and I agree with Tricia and Nancy. Um, I don't think these should be shovel-ready projects, I really do believe, especially with painted turtles. And other natural resources and especially that Maple Springs abuts up to conservation land. That should have a thorough environmental review before anything is approved. Um, anything shovel-ready, so that's just my thoughts on this.
Um, thank you for, thank you for that, Aaron, any others?
Doesn't look like we have anyone else besides Faith, I think that's it.
Hi, I I can't find my hand on the on the on the Zoom meeting, but I'd like to speak if if that's that's okay. Hi, um, I'm Julie Ostigai, I live over in um. Uh, Maple Springs Road area. And there's a lot of us who have been concerned about the the massive size of this project. And um, there's a lot of information, excuse it, coming forth. And we're trying to understand it and we're trying to understand the process here. Um, with this planning board, um, I heard tonight that um there will be a town meeting on June twelfth. Um, where the greater project will be presented to the town, am I correct in saying that?
No, there was a, uh, the June twelfth reference was to a town meeting in twenty twenty-one. Where the solar bylaws were modified through Article seventeen. And what I I I I'm just, I feel very. Uh, sorry, I'm very apologetic tonight because I haven't been able to explain myself very well, obviously, that. Um, these nine developers. Filed preliminary subdivision plans prior to the June twelfth, twenty twenty-one town meeting. With the sole intention of freezing the zoning bylaw. Meaning that the properties that they have and the subdivisions they called out. Would be under the uh old solar bylaws, not the new ones. For an eight-year period, this, in Massachusetts, this is how you freeze your zoning. You'd file a subdivision plan. They have no intent of building a subdivision. They intend to build solar farms. So they filed a subdivision plan prior to June twelfth, the preliminary one. And now they're here with the definitive one. With the sole purpose of freezing the zoning. And we're trying to go through all nine of these, the subdivision plans take time. And that's, and we we believe that we can expedite the process. Provide the zoning freeze and not allow them to build anything until they come back to this board. With a full um modified subdivision plan or site plan review that tells us. And lets us control the solar farm development they wanna do.
Okay, so you're saying that all these plans that are on. The planning board website are for solar fields and not for residential homes?
They look like they're for residential homes, but they're gonna be for solar fields. They're only using the subdivision process to freeze the zoning. The freeze into the old solar bylaw zoning.
Okay, cuz I think that clears up a lot of information, I don't, I I think the 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 average individual does not understand. Um, the the wording of of these meetings or what has been, you know, uh. Portrayed to um. You know, people along with the with the agenda, I I don't think it was very clear um to the individuals who are here.
It's hard to explain, I guess, so.
Okay.
Please, but everyone needs to rest assured that when it comes time to put any projects into these. Any of these nine parcels. That the applicant will come back to this board. With full plans and full review and full public hearing process, just like they are doing it for the very first time. Right now, all we're trying to do is let them do what they're legally entitled to, that and that is freeze the zoning without going through an a. An overkill process, which is gonna take up a lot of our time, your time and their time.
Okay, so this is freezing the land for solar fields and not for the permission to develop the land for residential homes?
They they, yeah, that's the intent, they could come back in the future with plans to do who knows what. And and it could be anything they wanna do. But the point is, they can't do anything until they come back with that full normal process of review by the town and.
All right, I appreciate it, thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions?
We have uh Jennifer and I think uh. Richard also, but I saw Jennifer first, so Jennifer, you can unmute and speak.
I think that my questions were answered, I think initially that this has gone so fast and it's been so back and forth, the last meeting and this one. That I understood initially that the plans were for for a solar farm, but they looked as though they could be for a residential development. So I just want, again, um, to make sure that I understand. These are only for a solar farm right now and they can't build a residential development without coming back for a full site plan review, is that accurate?
That's true.
In all nine instances?
Oh, yes, well, numbers one, two and three already have an approved solar farm um site plan review completed.
Okay, can they? I'm sorry, go ahead.
The app, the applicant here is taking uh. Extra steps to ensure their zoning remains constant.
So they can't, they can't decide to change and and add homes without restarting this process, is that accurate?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Next.
I think it was uh Richard, I think you had your waving your hand at the camera.
I.
Let me see, there they are.
Yes, good evening, um. Richard here, Richard Bork and my wife Karen, um, I just would like to know. Where do we get the information, or maybe you've said it, but I don't know if I heard it. For the zoning information that currently exists, that this application for freezing is being requested.
Um, if you go to the Wareham Planning Board website. Uh, in the bottom left corner, you'll see some quick links. Where it'll take you to the Wareham bylaws, the Wareham zoning bylaws, I believe. Let me just check real quick here. I can tell you exactly what's there. You can go to the zoning bylaws, the subdivision rules and regulations, Massachusetts general laws regarding zoning and subdivision. Um, it's all right there in the bottom left corner of the Wareham Planning Board webpage.
Would that direct me to the specific area of zoning that is under question here by many of us as residents?
You could, you could look it up in the index there, yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Here, I'm gonna, uh, wh- while we're doing this, um. This is the Wareham uh Planning Board webpage, if you go here to quick links. You will see these are our town bylaws, our zoning bylaws, our subdivision rules and regulations. Mass General Law Zoning Act, which is chapter forty-eight, the Mass General Law Subdivision Control Law, which is in chapter forty-one. If you go here, you can see um section eighty-one K. Get the next button over here and you can look at definitions for subdivision control law, it's all here for you. So trying to make this as easy as we can. Um. The solar bylaws are here and the zoning bylaws under section five ninety. Solar energy generation facilities. It's a good place to go for your, for your uh, for those laws, the ones I rattled off at the very beginning of the meeting.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else, Aaron?
I don't, I don't see any uh raised hands, but you should be good to go.
I will uh cut off public comment at this point then, and. I'm going to um. Use a technique I learned about and I'm going to ask for a motion to continue. As printed in the agenda under section four, items one through nine, continue all of these definitive subdivision plans. Numbers forty twenty-one, forty-one twenty-one, forty-two twenty-one, forty-three twenty-one, forty-four twenty-one. Forty-five twenty-one, forty-six twenty-one, forty-seven twenty-one and forty-eight twenty-one. To the next meeting, which is on February. I don't know.
Fourteenth.
February fourteenth. Uh, could I have a motion to that affect?
I'll move.
Have a motion from Mr. Corbett, next second from Mr. King, all in favor, Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Baptiste.
Aye.
Mr. Scholes.
Aye.
Mr. Corbett.
Aye.
And Mr. Swenson votes aye, five zero zero. Um. All nine of those public hearings have been continued to the fourteenth of February, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question, please?
Of course.
Uh, do we know when each of these applications was filed?
We do, uh.
Were they all filed at the same time?
No, I don't believe they were, but pretty close, but Aaron and I are working on on determining that right now.
Okay, well, you have ninety days in order to render a decision on the definitive plan, otherwise they get constructive grants.
Understood.
And that's the definitive plan that is before you, just just so you know. Um, you have to act on that as if it were if regular subdivision.
Understood.
Okay.
Right. Yeah, we we're we're having lots of discussions about that right now to make sure that we don't timeout on anything.
Okay.
All right, um, I should, Carl, I'm sorry, you should have interrupted me, I wanted to tell people and you meant, and you suggested I I would do it and I meant to and I forgot. Under continued public hearings under agenda item number five, uh, four of them have been. Have requested a continuance, um, Fearing Hill Road. Um, they didn't request it, that we we, it's continued from last meeting to the twentieth of February. Uh, North Carver Road was continued last meeting to the fourteenth of February. Um. The Bay Point Club came in last minute today with a request for continuation till the fourteenth. And sixty-nine Great Neck Road um came in last week with a request for a continuance. To the fourteenth, so. Um, again, I will ask for a motion to con-. Continue um thirty-six twenty-one, numbers. As printed in the agenda under item five, number five and number six. Projects thirty-six twenty-one and thirty-eight twenty-one, I would accept a motion to continue those. Public hearings till February fourteenth.
I'll move.
I have a motion by Mr. Corbett and a second by Mr. King, uh, call for a vote, Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Baptiste.
Aye.
Mr. Scholes.
Aye.
Mr. Corbett.
Aye.
And Mr. Swenson votes aye, five zero zero. So uh, items five and six are continued to the fourteenth. And that leaves us with Robinwood Road. Um. Um. The zero Route twenty-five, uh. Site plan review and the Warren Restaurant on Main Street, and I'm going to skip around and then I'm gonna do the um. The uh Route zero Route twenty-five one first. Item number four, I think we can do this quickly, Betsy, are you there?
Uh, yes, I am, can you hear me?
I can hear you just fine, thank you.
Excellent, good evening, how are you?
Good. You um had sent a note in um, uh, looking for a. You um had sent a note in um, uh, looking for a slightly different uh tactic going forward as opposed to waiting for the Attorney General?
Yes, sir.
Now, would you please uh just tell everyone what you're proposing?
Uh, we would like to uh. Request a continuance until the February fourteenth meeting. Uh, so that we can have an opportunity to speak with Town Council about uh our. Uh, about the issue of whether the three-year, whether. The three-year plan freeze that was uh triggered by this board's endorsement of an A and R plan last summer. Uh, protects this project from those June twelfth uh solar bylaw amendments, or rather, I should say.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Buckland, are you, are you listening in?
Yes, I am.
Um, I saw Mr. Town Council Bowen's response um asking that the uh Planning Board. Request his engagement. Um, is that your understanding as well?
Mr. Bowen's uh uh involvement would require a, a request. To, to uh, through a town administrator. To use his uh office for a review.
To the board, just to refresh everyone's um memory. We approved an A and R uh for this parcel of land. Uh, the applicant um believes that the A and R um for, uh, did accomplish the zoning freeze to the. Solar bylaws prior to um June twelfth. It is the work that the planning office and members of this board have done, don't agree with that. Um, but then again, we're not lawyers either, so. Uh, we've been waiting for the Attorney General to rule on the validity of the solar bylaw that we passed in June, because if they've, if they voted down, this whole point is moot. The applicant now, she's been waiting a long time um on this, because the Attorney General. Has enacted um, is suggesting that we. Have our Wareham Town Council uh engage with the applicant's counsel. And have a meeting of the minds to, to get a better understanding of where we think we are. I will say this for the benefit of the other members, if I was to vote. On, if I had a vote on whether or not this A and R provided uh zoning freeze to the um. Uh, June twelfth, Article seventeen that was passed, I would say, no, it does not. Uh, as, and obviously the applicant feels it does, so I think it, it's a very. I think it's fine that the applicant has asked for a town council to weigh in on this, and I've been that kind of anxious for that to happen myself, and I would suggest that we. Make a request to the town administrator for exactly that to happen. Chairman, I make a motion that the Wareham Planning Board officially request that Attorney Bowen engaged with Attorney Mason. To provide guidance on this issue before February fourteenth. I have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Scholz and a second by Mr. King. Any discussion from the board members? Not hearing any, I'll call for a vote. Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Baptiste.
Aye.
Mr. Scholz.
Aye.
Mr. Corbett.
Aye.
Mr. Swenson votes aye, five zero zero. Um. Uh, Ken, can you make the official request uh on your own, or do I need to write you something?
No, I'll do that based on this vote.
Okay, um, anything else we need to do on this item right now? Uh, we need to vote to continue it, right? Uh, thank you. I will accept a motion to continue to February fourteenth, project thirty-three twenty-one site plan review. Wareham PV One LLC at zero Route twenty-five.
I'll move.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Corbett and a second by Mr. King. Um, Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Baptiste.
Aye.
Mr. Scholz.
Aye.
Who's left? Mr. Corbett.
Aye.
Mr. Swenson votes aye, five zero zero. Okay, continue to the fourteenth.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, let's go to Robinwood Road. Mr. Gay, are you here tonight?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. How are you doing this evening?
I'm doing good. Thank you for letting me bump you down on the order there. Last time we met, we had a lot of concern. About um the sewer connection and you have since. Uh, provided a uh rather comprehensive document. Um, I'd, I'd, can you give us an overview for the publics and the, and the boards?
Sure, um, so what I provided was a, a supplemental letter, follow-up to my previous letter. Um, I attached uh some documents from the Plymouth County Land Court Registry of Deeds. Um, that show plans of this subdivision in the Robinwood Road area. Um, going back to the, the turn of the century. So originally the plans are from about eighteen ninety or eighteen eighty-six. Uh, and revised in nineteen oh nine. Um, I also provided the Mass General Law that's on topic with respect to uh public utilities. And the rights to install within private ways. Um, and then we provided a sewer sketch, so you could see which ways we were planning on utilizing to connect to the existing sewer main. Um, and lastly, a street acceptance list, so we could clearly identify which streets are private and which streets are public. Um, so the, the path that we're taking um follows roads that are within the subdivision. That was created back in eighteen eighty-six and nineteen oh nine. Um, and also goes up to uh Nannan Street, which um from the towns' records. Is a, a public road and that's where we're connecting to the existing sewer line. Uh, so what we're, we're utilizing is our, our rights under the, the plans, but most importantly. Under chapter one eighty-seven, section five, which allows an individual to utilize. Private ways and public ways to, to connect utilities. So the intent is to be able to. Bring water, sewer, electrical, things of that nature down a public way. Uh, or private way, as long as it's not to the detriment of individuals that utilize those ways or on those ways. Uh, so our proposed construction is to stay within those public ways and private ways utilizing directional drilling. Um, if, if we do have to um. Enter onto someone's physical property outside of the roadway layout, we obviously will need to get those individuals permissions. Restore the land back to um the condition that it was in prior to any um touching. But from speaking with uh Mr. Rogers, the plan is to stay within uh the roadway layouts. Um, so I, I, I saw Mr. Rowley, um, who I copied on, on that correspondence in that package. In his letter to the board dated January twenty-fourth, so today's date. Um, has had a chance to review what I submitted to the board for its review. Um, and seemed satisfied with the additional information that we provided, which au- authorizes us to do what we're looking to do.
I will say I ha- I was uh rather impressed with the, I think it was eighteen ninety-two uh handwritten.
Um, yeah.
That was, that's, that was pretty neat, actually, so.
They're, they're tough to read, so. This area especially, you know, when you get into Plymouth County, you find some interesting titles and. It's nice when you have a title examiner that can, can break it down for you, so.
Um, for, so I have several topics with, to talk to you about tonight, but let's focus on the sewer right now. Um. Before I, before I turn to the board for their questions, I think it's important that Mr. Rowley, if you would comment. Um, you did do a report and distributed to this board. Uh, regarding the subdivision plan where you commented that. I took, I took it to read that you had gone through Mr. Gay's uh response around the sewer and you were satisfied that he has the right to do what they're proposing.
Yes, I agree. Um, the thing that made the difference for me was the fact that the nineteen oh nine plan, which is a land court plan. Includes not only the subject property, but it includes uh Forest Way and it also includes uh Wild Rose Avenue. Uh, within the uh property that is shown on that land court plan. So the fact that they are all on the same plan means that whoever had rights to the lot shown on that plan. Would have a right to um, to utilize the ways that are shown on that plan, the way that Mr. Gay has described it. Um, without that plan, I might not have been uh, uh, so clear on it, but I think there's no question. Now that that plan has been uh presented and made part of the deliberation that they do have the right. Uh, the one thing that I did put into my um report was that um any damage to public ways, they have to restore. To uh a satisfactory condition that uh meets the requirements of the Miss Point Maintenance Department. But as far as the private ways are concerned, it's my opinion they have the right to go in and do it, subject to what Mr. Gay has said.
Um, I should have asked earlier, Mr. Gay, you have a copy of uh the report Mr. Rowley distributed today?
I do, yes, we uh were able to retrieve it from the town's website.
Right, um, to the board members, um, any questions regarding the, the sewer hookup proposal? From the subdivision over to, um, I forget what street it's at now, but. As, if, as you can see, it looks, it looks very clear to me that um this is perfectly acceptable and there's no issue there.
I agree, Mr. Chairman.
If there's no other comment, um, I think we should, I'd like to move on and, and put the sewer issue to bed. Agreed?
Agreed.
All right, the next I'd like to go to then is the waivers, Mr. Gay. I'm looking at a letter where he asks for waivers around. Catch basins, shoulders, sidewalks, um berms and fire alarm circuits.
Yeah, so I, I can speak to those generally and Mr. Rogers could answer specific questions. My, my understanding of, of the waivers with respect to the, the road and things within the subdivision that we're, we're seeking. Have a lot to do with the ultimate design of the road. Um, we're utilizing that, that country drainage and the swales. Um, so you know, things like curbing, um, and then the, the, the drains would, would not go along with our design. Um, but I think that's a, an area and a topic that Bob um probably could provide better explanations on. Why we are requesting certain technical waivers.
I'm sharing the waiver letter right now, if that's all right.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, so.
Please.
We uh. We made one revision from our originally requested uh set of waivers, and so. Uh, with the revised plans, we've put the waivers on sheet one in the upper left-hand corner of sheet one. But um I just want to point out that that first catch basin waiver should be section um. Section six, excuse me. Six A, not VBA. The VBA was origi- so yep, if you, if you zoom in on the upper, if you could zoom in on the upper left-hand corner. We have, we have five waivers. So section six A, uh, catch basin spacing every four hundred feet. We've got the country drainage. Six C five uh requires a normal shoulder to pitch toward the pavement. So we needed to pitch away from the pavement. It's still a three-foot wide shoulder. Um, and, but there is no three-inch height and the slope is toward the drainage swales. Uh, section six G, uh, we've consistently requested a waiver from sidewalks. Uh, based on the small number of lots and the absence of any sidewalks in the neighborhood to connect to. Section six H, the precast concrete or granite curb. That uh ties right in again with the country drainage where, where we want to uh. She flow off the road in a uniform manner for the full length of the road. And section six K, the fire alarm circuit, I believe is, is just an outdated uh requirement and I, I don't. I, I don't know how many years it's been since fire alarm boxes have been installed in town.
Um. Uh, Mr. Rowley, any, um, I would assume that um. Six C five, the three what, the three-foot wide gutters um in the shoulder and. The. Six H, the precast concrete are, are kind of no brainers, given the design of the road and where we want the water to flow?
That would be correct.
Um, do you have any, can you help the board understand if you, any issues with the catch basin issue on number six A?
Well, there are no catch basins, uh, because normally the regulations would require you to put catch basins on both sides of the road. Uh, at distances not to exceed three hundred feet. In this particular case, it's, the runoff is going directly into the drainage swales and the stone trenches on each side. So there's no need for catch basins.
Um, then the, the board needs to discuss six G, the requirement for a five-foot wide, wide sidewalk. On this is only applies, this requirement is only against the internal subdivision road. Does, does the board have any questions to the applicant on this? Um. Not hearing your.
Mr. Chairman, Carl has a, a question, I think.
Go, Carl. Uh, yeah, I, I, I stopped because I don't have a question on uh the five waivers um listed. I had a note. From an early, do we need a waiver for streetlights?
We're providing a, a streetlight at the intersection with Robinwood Road.
Okay.
That's, that's the requirement that's listed in subdivision control.
That's, that's what it says, so we don't need one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, any other, any other questions or comments? Um, what I'd like to do is vote on all these waivers as a group, but, but if there's any, going to be any dissension, we'll need to. Uh, vote on them individually. Um.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question for Bob Rogers, if I could.
Please.
Bob, is the note that is on the screen at the bottom of the label with, is that up to date? Is the letter, do you say, of December seventh?
That's correct. What's the, what's the? Correct, there's, there's just that one Scrivener's error in that letter, but, but that is accurate.
Okay. No further question?
Mr. Chair, I have, I have one comment.
Who's speaking?
Attorney Gay.
Oh, sorry.
There, there was one, the waiver with respect to the, the lot circles, uh.
I'll get to those.
You're gonna do those separate? Okay, I just wanted to.
Yes.
Yep.
Chairman, a process question?
Sure.
Uh. Can we vote on these before closing the public hearing?
Oh, I, I think absolutely we can.
Okay, that was my process question.
I think in order to keep things moving along is be the wise thing to do. Um. Let me, let me ask the board members, um, let me ask it this way, is there anybody that's gonna vote? No on any one of these waivers? Cause if there is, I'm going to, um, I'll have to, we'll do them individually.
No, I'm, I don't see that that happening, not from me.
Uh.
Go for all of them.
So one more question, could you explain again what we're gonna do about the lot? Circle?
Next discussion.
So it's not, doesn't need to be listed on this page?
If, no, we're gonna have an, an, that'll be a separate discussion. I don't believe it has to be listed on this page. It may, it may be, but we're treating it as a separate waiver for, for tonight.
This point of information, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
There's a, there's a reference to the zoning waiver on the record of a lotting sheet.
Yes.
So, so that it's memorialized on the, uh, on the lotting plan.
And the process, Carl, the reason I'm t- t- uh treating this different is the process is just a little bit different. In terms of how the regulations are written. Um, and I don't want to get them mixed.
Yeah, that's a zoning regulation anyway, Richard, it's not a subdivision regulation.
Yeah.
That's why you want to keep it separate.
Exactly. Um. So, I would accept a motion. To, to approve the following waivers listed on page one. Of the.
They have to unmute me.
Please, can we mute, can you mute your um mics, please? On the plan date, uh, what's the date of this plan?
I'm not muted and they're ignoring me.
So let us revise January eighteenth, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. The January eighteenth plan, on page one, the waivers listed sections for section six A. Six C five, six G, six H and six K. That this board approve all five of those waivers as listed.
I'll move.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Corbett and a second by Mr. King.
They lied.
They didn't lie, it just sort of
Marlene, Marlene, I need you to mute.
Am I going to be able to speak?
At the appropriate time.
I was told that I will.
Aaron, could you please mute?
She's, she's muted now, but yeah.
Thank you. Uh, where, where, we had a motion and a, and a second. I'll call for the vote, Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Baptiste.
Aye.
Mr. Schultz.
Aye.
Mr. Corbett.
Aye.
And Mr. Swenson votes aye, 500. The waivers listed on page one are granted. Okay. Mr. Gay, can you give me an update on the conservation committee and what your timeline looks like there?
Yes, so we had our, our first meeting last week on it and the, the meeting I thought was very productive. We were discussing the, the roadway and those impacts only. That meeting was continued until their next meeting, which I believe is
February 2nd. February 2nd.
February 2nd, yes. And there were a few items that came up and I, I think Mr. Rogers can speak to the changes that he wanted or just information that they wanted shown on the plan. So I'll let Mr. Rogers fill you in with, with those technical details.
Uh, thank you, thanks, Tom. So there was a, it was only one request for information and one request to put additions on the plan. They, they wanted to see the sewer route, you know, which you basically agreed was approvable from the planning board this evening. So, so we're just going to provide the conservation commission with the route for the directional drilling for the sewer, which is the map that is in Tom's, Tom's packet. And, you know, there's a, in the conservation bylaw, there's a requirement for where four, four lots, residential subdivisions of four lots or, or more are subject to a, a 50-foot no activity zone from the wetlands. And so they've asked us to depict that in relation to the subdivision road construction. And so there's nothing on the subdivision plans that you're approving that is anywhere near a 50-foot no activity zone. And so those are the only two things, you know, I can't speak for the commissioners who may be investigating other things on their own. But I think we'll be in good shape and hopefully they'd be agreeable to close the public hearing and an issue and order of conditions following the hearing on February 2nd.
That's, that's good to hear. Let's move on then, or do we, do you anticipate any significant changes to the current plan set of the 18th, or can I assume that we're looking at finals now?
I don't, you know, particularly having received Charlie's letter and, you know, getting a sign off from his review for the, the technical aspects and the, the design of the roadway and the drainage and so forth. You never know, but, you know, we, we think we're in good shape to provide the information that they want and to you know, answer any final questions that they may have and, and ask for the close of the hearing and the issuance of the order.
All right, I'm, I've gone through Charlie's report. I don't know if you had time to go through it in detail?
Just read it, not, not in detail, certainly not, you know, I think you have a lot of suggested conditions of approval to consider. Don't know if you want to spend the time on that tonight, but we, you know, we're pleased to have him recommend it, recommend approval of the subdivision.
All right, yeah, I don't want to go into it tonight myself. So before I ask the board members for questions, I would, I would like to have your team work with the planning office and Mr. Shaheen and, and Mr. Rowley as necessary to go through his final report and understand what needs to be done, what needs to be updated in the plans, what needs to be updated in the, in any possible certificate of approval in any covenant terms, things like that. So we can do that offline, all right? And we'll, I anticipate we'll continue this hearing to the 14th. And hopefully we'll be done there. Now it's, Aaron, do you know what our 65-day limit is on this and, and given the fact that what you told me before the meeting started, that the continuance request gives us an extension on that 65 days is, I want to make sure everyone's on board with that.
Yeah, so when you, every time you file the continuance, you're starting that 65-day period. So if you, both the applicant and the board agrees to accept the continuance, then you're just, you know, restarting that clock again. So you're in good shape with timeline and things like that.
Mr. Chairman, you're refusing site plan review with subdivision. You've got 135 days from the date that they filed the application to submit your final determination to the town clerk. The 65 days does not apply to this property.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we've, we've granted continuances consistently as asked for by the board. We did get a, we did file a preliminary subdivision on this, so you know, the, the start, we, we started with 90 days, but you know, again, we've been working with the board and working with with Charlie and so.
I stand corrected, it is 90 days, not, not 135.
So how, whatever we need to do to, to file paperwork to, to give you the time that you need, we'll take care of that.
Thank you. All right, so let's move on to lot line circles or whatever we call them these days. The reason that we're, for the public's education, the reason these are treated different is that the waivers that were requested prior were subdivision law terms and regulations that waivers were requested from this board can grant at their discretion. Typically, any type of normal waiver to a zoning bylaw has to go to the zoning board of appeals. However, in the, in the Wareham zoning bylaws, when it comes to lot line circles, the, the planning board is given discretion to do a waiver in just those cases. So we need to talk about, Bob, help me here, I think there's, there's a waiver request on the lot line circle on, on lot 48 and on lot 52.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Would you please walk the public and the board through those requests real quick?
Sure, so we fully comply with the 180-foot diameter circle being within each of those lots. But the zoning describes this shape factor circle as being buildable upland. And so we have a sliver of isolated vegetated wetland on lot 48 within the circle. And we have, again, like a thumbnail portion of that circle on lot 52 goes over the retaining wall and on to the beach. And so Mr. Rowley correctly identified that, that we need to request a waiver from from having a circle that has a portion of wetland in it. And I think we've documented that, you know, 97% of the circle is upland and of course, both lots fully comply with the percentage of upland versus wetland. And Mr. Gay provided a letter of opinion and, and some supporting documentation of some plans that the, the board has endorsed in the past where this waiver was granted on other properties. And so we feel that in our case, for sure, the inclusion of a small portion of wetland within that upland buildable circle does not constitute a detriment. It does, it doesn't derogate from the intent of the zoning, which is to have uniformly shaped lots.
Um, Mr. Bob, I, I will add a comment. I did talk to the conservation agent and ask him for some guidance on lot line circles into the, into the wetland. And he said, and the feedback I got was the, the most important thing to the ConCom was that the delineation lines are respected or marked and, and shown and respected. And he didn't see that there was much issue with having a small area of the wetlands within the circle, so. I'll just share that. I wanted to understand that, that whole issue myself. So I'll open it to the board members. Are there any questions here?
No questions.
Chairman. I, I generally appreciate what Mr. Gay said and the guidance that you got from Mr. Pichette. And I think I asked this question before. It's sort of a process question. We, because this is a subdivision plan, we have no, or can our order of conditions require the placement of a, of a note or a restriction on the deed for those two lots so that the homeowners know they can't go into those areas and do what they want. They have to leave them alone. Can we put that as a condition and can that, I, I
Conservation matter.
Okay. So it has to be done by conservation. We can't, we can't do it.
It, it will be done by conservation as a matter of process. When we receive an order of conditions, it'll, it'll be recorded in the registry of deeds, attached to the certificate and so through the conservation commission notice of intent process, the concerns that you have would, would be addressed.
Mr. Chairman, is there any harm in waiting till that order of conditions is issued by ConCom to confirm that?
Um, I, I do, I think there may be just from a, a timing perspective and, and the fact that the subdivision laws don't have a requirement that the conservation commission rule before we, before we vote.
I, I understand that. I just wondered if waiting two weeks was going to cause a problem. We're, we're going to continue this anyway.
Mr. Chairman, I think that, I think there's two separate issues here. So the, the order of conditions that we hope to receive, at least, you know, get a positive vote in, on February 2nd is for the the roadway construction, the utilities, the, the development of the roadway only. And so since, you know, there, since the roadway and, and the grading and so forth is, isn't anywhere near, near the wetlands. It's only when we do the individual lot notices of intent for lot 48 and 52. That's, you know, so that's, that's a ways off.
I, I understand now that what you're saying. Thank you, I understand.
Bob, from my education, I want to make sure everyone understands this, that when it comes time for your building permit on lot 48, you'll have to go back to, to somebody who's going to tell you to delineate those, those wetland borders, right?
Well, the, the flags are in the field, so the delineation that you, that you see on the plan, I mean, it, it was a while ago, but the, the the flags are in the field, but what we're going to see is we're going to see that the conservation commission is going to impose a no activity zone of either 30 feet or 50 feet. But, so we're going to show a limit of work on that lot that we're going to be, have to be adhered to. I certainly envision a fence going up along the limit of work there just for, you know, our own purposes. But, you know, that plan that gets approved by ConCom will have special conditions one way or the other to delineate the limit of work that, that would go no closer to that resource area than what's approved.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Done.
All right, so what page were those waiver requests on? Do you remember, Bob?
So if you just zoom in a little bit under zoning data, go, yep, so go to the zoning data, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
So the, the explanation for the waiver request was provided in detail through Tom Gay, his letter, and so basically this is a note that is on several plans that the planning board has endorsed. And it says a waiver for lots 48 and 52 is granted from the shape factor requirement of Article 6, Section 15 of the Wareham zoning bylaws.
Last call for comments. I take, I would accept a motion to approve the waiver request for lots 48 and 52 from the shape factor requirement as outlined in Article 6, Section 615 of the Wareham zoning bylaws. I have a motion by Mr. Corbett and a second by Mr. King, I think. I'll call for a vote. Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Baptiste.
Aye.
Mr. Schultz.
Aye.
Mr. Corbett.
Aye.
Mr. Swenson votes aye, so that's 500. I'm through all the issues I have. Mr. Gay, do you have any issues or any of the planning board members have any additional issues they want to discuss tonight?
Mr. Chair, no, I think we've, we've addressed the topics that we thought would be discussed and acted upon tonight.
What I would propose we do then is oh, before we open this for public comment, to the board, is there any reason to, after public comment tonight, is there any reason to not close the public hearing?
Say that again, please.
Is, after we have our public input tonight, is there any reason to continue the public hearing or can we close it, given that I believe we have all the data that we need to make a decision?
Thank you.
Then, Bob, do you, do you know of any reason to keep the public hearing open? Board members? Think about that. I'll, I'll come back to that. Right now, we're going to open up the public hearing for public input.
Um, Mr. Chairman, can I make just one comment right before you do that?
Of course you can.
Just stating, have to state this for the record, I'm sure that Marley and Aaron is going to talk about some of the things that she submitted, but for the record, she had submitted two letters for the file that are posted on the website. And she's open, you know, obviously during public hearing to go through some of the issues she has, so I won't read them, but just for the record, she did submit two letters. I just had to state that.
Okay. And the board has seen notification of those letters. I've read those letters. So I will now open the public hearing for public comment. Please keep in mind the following. Purpose of the public hearing is for citizens to have an opportunity to provide input to the board on a project being considered. Comments or lists are limited to three minutes, which can be extended by the chair. Public is requested to only bring new information for the board's consideration and not repeat information that has already been provided. Any questions from the public must be directed to the chair who will determine if the question is appropriate and if so, if there's a spokesman to answer it. Note is not the purpose of the public hearing for the board to educate the public on the law or to provide legal opinion. That said, I will open the hearing to the public. Aaron, could you please let the first person in?
I think, probably start with Marlene because she raised her hand first initially.
No, it's okay. I, I would rather have my attorney speak. John Friedman.
Um, is Mr. Friedman a citizen of Wareham?
No, but he represents me.
I need some guidance here. This is citizen input to a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be very brief. I can assure you that.
Mr. Buckland, just let me double check, all right? Mr. Buckland, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Can Ms. Rones? Can Ms. Rones, attorney who is not a Wareham citizen contribute to a public hearing?
Yes, he can. If you, if you, if you approve it.
What if I don't approve it?
Then he doesn't get to speak.
Attorney Gay doesn't live there either.
That's a different situation. Mr. Friedman, if you'll be brief, if you, if you can be brief, I'll, I'll allow you to speak. Thank you.
I, I will, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, members of your board and citizens of Wareham. I would ask that you do keep the public hearing open until your, at least your next hearing. We are scheduled to meet with Attorney Gay and his clients to discuss the Aaron's concerns. And we suspect that that meeting will take place prior to your next meeting. And so we would ask that you keep the public hearing open until after we can meet with them and hopefully have for the board and the applicant some agreement between my clients and the applicant.
All right. I understand your request. I'm going to ask Mr. Gay to comment. Are you on board with this plan, Mr. Gay?
I, I think the intent of, of meeting with this abutter was to see if there were any things we could do on our site. I don't think anything that we would be discussing would have to do with the roadway, the lots. We were hopefully addressing her concerns respect to her solar panels and, and some other things that she's brought up. You know, I haven't had a chance to really talk with Attorney Friedman. But our, our discussions from my understanding with my client was going to be with respect to things that we can maybe do on our property that would not be part of the subdivision plan. But maybe would address her concerns in some of her letters with respect to her solar panels or, or other things that she's brought up.
Yeah, I understand. The the scope of a subdivision plan is a lot more limited than a lot of people think. It's basically the road, access to the lots and, and utilities. Building permits and, and things like that are, are managed through a different process and a different group entirely. However, Aaron, we have time. After we finish public, the board will, will discuss the request. I understand, Mr. Friedman.
If I could just briefly add, we did submit a letter to you confirming Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one M and the solar array. And we also have some very significant concerns regarding the, the water flow testing and the vehicle testing. And one, those are items that we would like to be discussing with Mr. Gay and his clients that we do feel under Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one M are considerations that this board is supposed to give in deciding subdivision approval or setting conditions for subdivision approval.
Yes. Yeah, we've, we've been through, we've been through the traffic report provided by the applicant.
I, I understand. Again, this is something that we wanted to discuss with them to see if we could come to an agreement with them. And that's the, the reason we're asking that since this matter anyway is being continued to another hearing date, that just the public comment section be left open so that if we make any progress with the applicant, we can report that progress back to, to the board.
Okay. Thank you. Who's next, Aaron?
Um, I don't see any hands up unless someone is waving at the camera. I know Marlene Aaron is waving at the camera.
Yes.
Marlene, I'll give you another minute.
That's all I need.
Go ahead.
Okay. At about twenty minutes of six, my attorney called me and said that Attorney Gay had called him. And that we were supposed to be setting up a meeting. So I wasn't prepared to go through my twelve, list of twelve items. Some of them, yes, I understand, conservation and please excuse me, I have a cold, so my voice is horrible. But I'm still concerned about the driveway and I believe that's planning board purview that comes onto Robinwood without the sight line of a hundred and fifteen feet.
Marlene, you've already been, you've already been through this. We, we've got your letter. You've made these points before. You're repeating yourself.
Okay. But what's the answer? When does the answer come?
We will take your input in, into consideration when we vote. Is there anyone else, Aaron?
Mr. Chairman, may I just, do you may I just, point of information?
Sure.
So we, we've never shown a proposed driveway location on lot forty-eight. But we have the ability to put that driveway a hundred and forty feet from the intersection. So there is no site distance issue. I, I don't know where the misunderstanding came in. I understand the reference to the stopping site distance from the traffic report. But we can physically put a driveway for that lot, a hundred and forty feet from the intersection. It's just bad information.
Thank you. Aaron, Galaxy S twenty-one Ultra five G would like to make a comment.
Yep. Feel free. I'm not able to unmute them, but if they and you can speak.
The person waving their hand, Galaxy S twenty-one, you're muted. You need to unmute. Going once.
Hold on, he's got it right now.
Here we go. You're up.
Hello. I just wanted to let you know that the road commissioners were supposed to get a report by the municipal maintenance director. And the municipal maintenance director has not gotten back to the road commissioners and they have not voted on Robinwood Road. The other thing that you may be, want to be aware of, I talked to the sewer department and they do not have an application on this yet or approved one. So I, I think you may have jumped the gun by not letting us go on a little further. But I think probably the other issues that I have coming. You would only shut me off anyways, so I'll, I'll let it go with that. Thank you.
Very much. Kristen's iPad, Aaron.
Yep, they should be able to unmute. You're free to speak, whoever's on Kristen's iPad. Also, whoever spoke last, you might have stated your name just for the record in the minutes.
Yes, Mike Bessie, thirty-nine Robinwood Road.
Thank you so much. All right. Whoever's under Kristen's iPad, state your name and address for the record and then you can speak.
Hi, I'm Matt Regirio. I have a property on Tinker's Lane, which is in a butter or two Forest Ave. And I'm just wondering about the accessibility to the sewer line that's going to be crossing by Tinker's Lane and if, if there's going to be any accessibility for all the residents who live on Nanamet Street, Wild Rose Ave, Forest Ave. Are we ever going to be able to attach to that sewer line or is that going to be a closed, closed line where a lot of the folks down there have been waiting desperately for the last thirty plus years to, to get sewerage down there and we've always been told that the, the sewer department is at capacity. And that they're not allowing any more sewer hookups down in our area. And I'm just I'd like to know if, is, is the sewer basin, is it at capacity or is it not? That's, I'd like to know that.
Mr. Rogers?
Have any input on that?
So our, our project with the seven homes, our, our required capacity has been approved by the sewer commission. We have not provided them with, with a, you know, a specific application, but we, we notified them last year of our intent to connect. I've had several conversations with Mr. Campina about it. He was, what our method of connection with the directional drilling. It's, it would not be a town project. It would be our private sewer line connecting to the system at, at Woodbury and Nanamet. And that basically avoids a whole lot of headaches and it also you know, when you get into a situation where other, other people would be allowed to connect, then they should share in the cost of the installation. And it would be, we would have to trench in a forest main and, and everyone would end up with pumps in their yards. And so what the sewer commission, again, so the, the first thing is we've got the capacity and we have that letter. And the, and the method that we're doing is the least disruptive to the neighborhood. And it doesn't result in any, any betterment assessments. So then.
Okay. I have just one quick question. I'm just curious why you know, in the, in nineteen eighty-seven, they ran the sewer line right down to the end of Nanamet Street to the pillars. And we, we're on a private way now and we're up a lot of waterfront properties down there that could desperately use the sewer and that I know the town said repeatedly that the pump stations were at capacity and everything and that we could never get sewer down there. I'm just wondering why all of a sudden that now you know, we're going to have seven new major homes on, on the, on the, on the sewer. But maybe, maybe that's for another time, time. That's all.
I think that's for the sewer commissioner.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Aaron, any other hands?
Um, I think Ron, I know someone has their hand up right now under LTTD, but did Ron Enos, did you have your hand up earlier for this?
No, I did not. Sorry.
Okay. So whoever's just raising their hand under LTTD, just state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Chairman, Thomas Dunning, U twelve Size Point Road. Mr. Chairman, a request in the public hearing remains, remains open because we haven't seen the documents that were mentioned in the Bob Rogers' letter on the website and we have not seen the response from Mr. Riley, the peer reviewer. And it's only fair that we have a, a chance to read those and look at them and get some guidance on it. So I'm just recommending as a process issue, the hearing remains open.
Your point's well taken. Mr. Riley's letter came out today. I'm not sure if it's been posted yet. And what was the other document that you were interested in?
Mr. Attorney Gay's letter, the new one.
Okay. Um, if it's not posted now, I'm sure it will be soon. Okay?
And just for the, it is, it has been on, it is on the website. So just if you can go take a look, it's, they both dated. You'll see the letter from Attorney Gay is the nineteenth and then Riley's peer review is up there. It just came in today. So it got posted up there today.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments tonight? Mr. Chairman. Hearing none, I will close the public input session of this hearing. To the board members, I think some points have been made that that are worthy of continuing this hearing. One more meeting to next week. I mean, to the next meeting on the fourteenth. Any comments or questions from the board members?
I agree, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I would accept a motion then to continue Project thirty-two twenty-one or definitive subdivision plan on Robinwood Road till February fourteenth. Can I have that? In a second?
Okay.
I have a motion by Mr. Corbett and a second by Mr. Schultz. Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Baptiste.
Aye.
Mr. Schultz.
Aye.
Mr. Corbett.
Aye.
And Mr. Swenson votes aye. Good. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We are down to Project thirty-nine twenty-one Site Plan Review at fifty-nine Main Street. Warren Q O B Z LLC. I'm going to ask if we can take a two-minute break. Is that, is, anyone have heartburn with that? Back in two minutes, okay? Everybody back? Okay. Let's move on to the restaurant on Main Street. Mr. Riley's report came out today, his first peer review report. Mr. Madden, I assume you're speaking tonight for the, for the applicant?
Um, yes, I am. Bill Madden from GAF Engine Hearing on behalf of Warren Q O Z B LLC.
Would you care to give us an update as to where we are? We've had one meeting and we saw the preliminary elevations and the preliminary plans.
Or let me, I guess, let me start by, you know, after our first public hearing, we, we went over a couple of items on the plan and I think that there was a, you know, another plan set that was submitted to the planning board on the eighteenth of January. And on that plan set, we did a, we did a couple of revisions to the plan based on some of the input that was received at our first hearing. And also just for the building project. So let me start with the, the building first on the, on the southerly end of the restaurant building, the sixty-five foot sixty-five hundred square foot restaurant building. You might recall, we had a had an addition that was added on there. It was a sixty by forty foot addition. It was going to be part of the kitchen, restaurant, whatever. That has been removed from, from the project area. And the area that was occupied by that portion of the building is now the area that will be used for our deliveries and our trash pickup over there. You might also recall just from the landscaping plan on that, on that southerly end, we created a, a berm that was heavily vegetated to provide a screening, some, some screening at that location. But that's the original plan that was submitted there. But you could see that sixty by yeah, that little area there.
I can, Richard, I can, I mean, Mr. Chairman, I can share the updated one if you'd like.
Yes, please. I, I'm sorry. I thought I had the updated one. I must have made a mistake. I stopped sharing. Would you please?
Yep, I can do that right now.
Sorry, Bill.
No worries.
All right. Let me know what, what sheet that you want to look at.
Going to be a sheet number, well, I don't know anyone with the building on. You go to the next sheet four, I guess, should, four should do it. Okay. You can see to the south end of the property where there's a set of stairs that come out of the, the new building on the far right-hand side of that sheet. There you go, right down, a little lower. There you go. That's where the sixty by forty addition was. And what we've done is we've made that basically the, the little, created a little more room there for the loading and delivery area. That's where the deliveries. Create a little more room there for the loading and delivery area. That's where the deliveries. Um, will be made to the restaurant. They'll bring material upstairs or downstairs. And um, through those stairs and in other ways. And the backside of that on the concrete, there's some dumpsters we showed just further to the right, just parallel to the building. Where that thirty one foot dimension is a little down a little bit there, Aaron.
Yeah, right here. There we go.
There you go. What we did there is um, we just show where the dumpster enclosure would be. And what we've shown is you've shown three dumpsters, one for trash, one for cardboard. And then there's a smaller one that would be used for um. For we think some grease disposal, so that would be hidden back there as well. There's a, that's a. Cast in place concrete pad that would be at grade. Um, and that would be used to uh. Like I said, for the drop and for the pickup of the uh, of of the dumpsters. Charlie had a comment on that, which I'll be happy to talk about a little bit later, but. I did one almost identical to this at another restaurant. Um, I don't know, fifteen years ago. I did a twelve inch thick. Gravel base with a six inch thick welded wire fabric reinforced concrete pad. And uh, that's what's been used to uh, to to access their dumpsters for a number of years. It accessed it through a twelve foot wide gate. We have an eighteen foot wide opening here and I know on Charlie's comments says that it might be difficult for the. Trash hauler to. To maneuver in that area. Um, it hasn't really been my experience that that is a problem. Um, due to the fact that most of the times you're scheduling your trash hauler to pick up. Um, early morning prior before any, prior to the start of any work by most people. You know, kitchen staff usually begins at ten or eleven in a restaurant, maybe a little bit later, maybe a little earlier. But the trash pickup generally occurs and it's a bit, it's available to be arranged. Um, before work area starts, so that's what we were looking at uh, doing for our for our trash pickup. Using that concrete pad area as access, uh, which would be flush with the driveway that's coming in off of Main Street. So that was one of the changes. That was um, was made to the plan along the front of the building. Where um, the stairs are that entered in, I think we reduced the width or the extension of the. The covered portion of that to from ten feet to eight feet. There's stairs for regular access that would go up to the uh, to the restaurant, the kitchen level. And then to the right of that, there's um. A switchback handicap ramp. That would be utilized to um, to go up the sixty inches that's needed to go up from grade into the building. Um, so what we did is we just trimmed that down a couple of feet. Um, more than what it was originally, the set of plans indicated that that was right out flush with the uh. With the granite curbing. We head further to the north where the where the deck is. Um, we just to the right of that, it's to it's to the deck on the, there you go. Um, right there, we we clearly indicated there's a patio underneath underneath that deck. And the stairs that are shown, um. Those stairs will come from grade, they'll come up through the top of the deck and that'll provide access into the uh. Into the to bar section or or a portion of the restaurant. So that was another change that was uh. Was made to the made to the plans relatively minor in nature, but more to um, for convenience for the patrons. Um, across the front of the parking lot where we had our our stone. Infiltration trench, um, which is which is right there that's shown on another plan. What we did is we add, I I changed the stone, I I put more um, like a a one to two inch river stone there, rounded stone. As opposed to the the three eighths inch crushed stone, piece stone that we had there. And then we added, we showed a couple of um. Two inch thick by. Um, five foot square granite slabs, just essentially a stepping slab for someone to step on. Access the sidewalk um, from the parking area, you know, those. Those um, river stones are easily walked on what have you, but we thought it might be. An attractive feature to add to the site and give um, some of the the patrons. Another option to step onto the sidewalk. We also added two little sidewalks at the suggestion, I think it was of the planning. Of somebody that commented that it'd be nice to have some access to the sidewalk at the bulk end. For the Marina operation, so we put a, we put a sidewalk on each side of the um, of the pavilion. Um, just so to to balance it, it wasn't really a hundred percent fifty fifty balance, but we thought two. Um, distinct locations would be. Would be adequate to provide the access to those twenty four slips. And you'll also note that the pavilion, we reduced the width of that, the length of that pavilion, it was. Twenty six by sixty originally. And it's been reduced to twenty six and a half by forty four. Then that was a result of the of a discussion that Mister Warren had with one of the neighbors across the street. That, you know, if there was a chance that they could. You know, reduce the size of that building, perhaps move it to the north a little bit. Um, that might facilitate their view that they've enjoyed um, from across the street for a number of years. So that was the primary reason that that was that that was done. So we slid the building down, reduced it in size. And um, you know. I think it where I think it worked out um, fairly well. And as far as that goes, those are the major, those were the major. Um, revisions to the plan. That were done between the time we originally submitted. And the time we refiled plans on the eighteenth. Um, these were the plans that that Charlie did have an opportunity to review. Um, he had a couple of comments, he raised a couple of comments, um. We just received the letter today. I did uh, did have a chance to look at it. Um, like I can touch on them briefly if that's what you'd like me to do, Mister Chairman.
Please.
Okay, um, the first item that was brought up was uh, relative to sheet four of eleven. Um, we selected a driveway entrance of twenty feet at that. Northerly most driveway access. What we what we felt is that if we put a larger radius coming out of the parking lot. Even though we reduced the throat width of the driveway access in. It would still provide a little bit better turning movement for people that were leaving the site. And it would clear those sites from the line of sight of people that might be interested in driving in. On that northerly driveway. In fact, if you were to measure the distance. From the face of curb to face of curb out the radiuses, that driveway width is like fifty five feet. Whereas the one on the southerly end of the project, which shows a twenty four foot wide throat. Was um, is really like fifty feet, so we thought that it would improve the. The use of that entrance by doing it in the manner that we did. If we were to switch it down to a twenty four foot wide. Um. Driveway throat, I think we either lose a parking space or have to um, be creative in getting the. The final space in there. Uh, as you know, forty six spaces were required. Um, by the zoning table. So that was um, that was one of the things that Charlie. Charlie commented on, I don't think he was really a hundred percent in favor of. Of what our design choice was at that location, but I just wanted to share the thought process with the uh, with the board, at least the way. The way we were thinking about it. Um, the second comment on his letters, we talk about a guy wire. That's in front of a utility pole, it's by the transformer at the front of the building. Um, we'll just have to leave that up to the utility company. Um, to to determine how they want to, how they want to deal with that. Um, the Charlie is correct, that guy wire is. Located in the parking lot as as it would exist today. But we think that um, the utility company would be able to um. Relocate the guy. Put a different type of pole in or do something along those lines, but that's what we we think would be um. Would be in play there. On um. On his next common sheet eleven, six of eleven, that was the uh. That was, that was the area that we were talking about where the the dumpsters were and the loading area was. I don't think that it's really that difficult of a maneuvering area, it's a front. Those dumpsters are like either six or nine yard dumpsters, they're front load pickups. Those guys have a pretty good ability to be able to stick those tines down there, manipulate the the dumpster one way or another. So they can pick it up, dump it and 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 put it back down. So we think that it's uh, we think that it's all right, you know, and that's based a little bit on my own personal experience. And as far as the concrete slab to be H twenty design. You know, I use that six inch slab in another job with a twelve inch gravel base underneath it. Um, I don't know if H twenty is. Is really required there. I mean, I would be planning on using three quarter inch, five thousand P S I concrete. For for that job and uh, concrete has excessive strength and in compression and. I don't know if really H twenty. If it, first of all, I don't know if it meets H twenty, I think it would support the vehicle that's on it. And where we're not clear spanning anything or putting a cover on top of a tank or something. I don't know how significant H twenty is, I think that we would just need a pad that's suitable for the. For the vehicles that are going to be accessing it. Um. The lighting plan, we did receive a lighting plan um, from Rab Lighting, they indicated the uh. The light fixtures in in what have you, they're the same light fixtures that we've used in other. Projects, we've sent them out to Rab for their for their lighting review. I think that as far as the zoning goes in in lighting in Article twelve of the bylaw. Looks to me as if those lights do meet it, they are dark sky compliant. There is no light that would emit off the top of that, all the light is to be emitted down. And if there was a need to have some um, a shroud to prevent glare off the properties. Or onto Main Street, those could be re, those could be provided. However, the photometrics plans that was submitted don't show really a significant amount of light. Finding its way onto the street, it's in the order magnitude of one to three foot candles, which are uh, are. Good light levels for safety for people walking around in uh. And and things of that nature. I think I want to coordinate with Rab on that, on on that, just as a one final go over to be. Be one hundred percent, I think that they had a. A a little bit of a difference in the pole height, our plan, I want to say, showed a sixteen foot pole height. On a three foot concrete base, you know, our preference is to is to have a concrete base so that. If someone were to back into one of the light pole, they wouldn't knock the pole off the base, but. Basically back into the base. Um, so that's what we're, that's what we're talking about there. Other, other than that, Charlie did have some comments on the the soil test. You know, I thought that the soil tests were. You know, other than the top two feet of that material were pretty consistent. And um, you know, certainly if there was any issue with inconsistency of soil and. And we found things that were not compatible with what we want to do. Um, we would definitely want to remove that material, replace it with sand or something that was a little bit uh. Little bit, has a little bit more infiltrative capacity, so we have no objections to those if they were, if they were to be um, conditions of approval. And as far as the minimum of two feet, I think we maintain that minimum of two feet. If I remember correctly, the 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 test pit data shows. The uh, the water table depth at anywhere between sixty and um. Sixty sixty inches and eighty six, eighty six or eighty inches. In the area of the infiltration bed, so um. W- we don't have any, we don't have any problem or any issue with those suggestions there, they're pretty consistent. And as far as the construction recommendations, um, all of those, all of those are all right. Um, I think that they're for. For Charlie's benefit, I mean, he definitely needs forty eight hours to go. The gravel base that we show on. Underneath our pavement. I want to say that we added that note to the plan that we are going to fine grade and compact the. The top of the gravel before we place the dense, the dense graded. Uh, my experience in that is it it generally always, not generally, it always gets done, at least if we're supervising the construction of the work. And um, works out fairly well in 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 all instances. Um, and let's see, the fourth item that he has there was the work related to conservation. We did have a meeting with conservation um, last week. We have one coming up this week. And uh, they haven't really had. I don't think they had too many, too many problems with it because the site is. A site that's considered redevelopment, it's a prior developed site. Um, the the regulation that we have to follow for that is not quite as rigorous. Is what it would be if it was not predeveloped, so I think that they're uh. They they've been all right and on board with pretty much everything that we're doing thus far on the uh, on the project. So that's where we stand today with things and happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Board members, uh, any questions? I have. All right, I have a couple of questions, Bill. Um, just give me a second here.
Sure.
Um. Got too much stuff open on my computer, I forget where I'm at. Um, I'm looking at the site plan application in regard to traffic. And you talked to traffic and the impact that the construction. And the employees will have, but I don't see any any mention of. Uh, customer traffic, and I'm wondering if. Um, a traffic report is warranted, um, I think about the traffic coming. North um, onto the curve there at Bessie Park, um, and what. What that'll be like for. Um, you know, getting in and out, I'm, uh, you have any thoughts on that? Um, my my head tells me we need to understand that better.
Well, I think that um. You know, that's, that's one of several ways to to access or egress the site is through that northerly most entrance coming in off of Main Street. You know, there's also a route along High Street, people could uh. Between, uh, I don't know if it's called Chapel or or Marion Road, right at the intersection of High Street, Marion Road. You know, there's another access there that you could drive down um, High Street, take a left on to Cedar Street. And enter into the southerly most driveway entrance onto the site. And in a similar fashion, there's um, there's egress and access off of Church Ave, so. Um, you know, you'd have to be up to um, the intersection of of. Of High Street and Marion Road and. You would end up taking that first right by the driveway that goes down by the high school, get on to Church Ave. Take a left there, I think on War Ave and then head down by Wars Marina and enter. Enter the site or leave the site in that direction, so. Seems to me that there's, there's like three distinct routes that one could take when they get to the site, so. Um, I think that. You know, similar to, I think, discussions that might have taken place for the Wareham Plaza project. You know, people were talking about the multiple routes that. That one might have to access that mall. And you could see that how over time people find there the route that they're most comfortable with. Think from a restaurant operation point of view, I don't think you see the influx of of um. Of patrons in the same manner that you might see the influx of patrons that are going to the grocery store. Or retail or retail outlet. You know, these restaurants nowadays with the, uh, at least nowadays with the issues that they have with health. I think that they really try to do a pretty good job of. Of um, of what, of seating customers, sitting on tables. You know, waiting on the customers so that they have a a more uniform um. Delivery of meals and and uniform approach to the kitchens and what have you, at least that's what. That's what I'm told by the friends of mine that own restaurants, so. I'm thinking that, you know, the forty six spaces, the hundred and fifty seats, it's not a tremendous amount. Um, winter time ru- will also come into play, the Marina will not be in operation in the wintertime. The ice cream shop or the or the um. The little retail store or the. Marina's Marina shop, whatever we'd like to call it, whatever it might end up being down there. Those those uses are really, they're they're non-existent from um, you know, end of October in through the. You know, literally the middle of May, so I think that. You know, when we really look at the use and the distribution of the use over the seasons of the year, that it. Might not be as um, as complex as as what as what might meet the eye initially.
Um, I'll ask the board if they have any concerns. Um, I'll ask the board if they have any concerns. I agree, Bill. I hope it 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 doesn't, but I think it would warrant uh, a little further study. Um, any board members have any thoughts or feelings on traffic report?
Chairman, I raised uh, those same issues uh, the last time we spoke. Uh, with the applicant and Mr. Madden gave the same answer. I'm still uh. Not convinced because some of those access roads up to High Street and Church Street are are very narrow. And uh, I don't think people would choose to use that access route if they, if they didn't have to. But uh, I, I, I do understand the explanation. Um. I don't, I'm not, I'm not convinced yet.
Any other member have any thoughts?
Yeah, if if I could, um. With all due respect to Bill's opinion, I, I don't agree with his assessment of that intersection not. Uh, posing a, a concern. Um. You know, if, if you're coming from out of town to visit this, this new location and you're using Google or ways to get there. It, it's not going to take you down those back roads to get you from the other direction. It's going to bring you right down Main Street. Um, Main Street in the summertime is already a problem. Um, I frequent that end of the, of town on the weekends. I visit the little shake shop there. The, the health store by the hospital. And I see it firsthand, the traffic coming in and out of that road. With, with no restaurant there at all can sometimes pose a real challenge. So you add a, a viable restaurant, some more Marina slips, um, and it's then add summer. And I, and I think it deserves a traffic study. I, I don't think I could take it on face value that it's not going to create a problem.
Yeah, and I think just as a, if I could just point out another thing. I mean, now that they have that crosswalk. That's just to this, whatever it is, the east of of Main Street, that crosswalk gets quite a, quite a bit of activity from the um. From the retailer that's also on Main Street. And it does have a tendency to slow the traffic and to provide turning um, up opportunities for, for vehicles there. I mean, a lot of people stop there, a lot of people cross there. It's, you know, I think it's better than a, well, similar, a push button crosswalk. But that's just another um, mitigating measure that, you know, helps with some of the traffic. But the point's well taken. I do understand, um, particularly from people coming from out of town. You're exactly right. That's the route that. They're likely to, to, to approach the restaurant from.
So Bill, you're hearing, you're hearing three members um, express concern. Can you? Um, I'd like to request that you uh, provide a traffic report as part of the application. And please make sure that that traffic report considers uh, summertime traffic. Um, which is the, you know, the, as you know, the problem area is. I don't know that we need to vote on it. I will if, if, if you would like that, Bill. But um, I think if you just told us that you'd do a traffic study and come back and tell us what the impact's going to be, that would be the right way to go.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we'll, you know, if that's what, if that's what it takes to, to secure the comfort of the, of the board. Then I think that that's what we would need to do. I think that, you know, what do we, what do we, you know, normally when we do a traffic report. We're looking at the level of service that's provided at an intersection, um, you know, and. I think that what do we, what are we, what are we going to be gauging this against? What are, what are we? What are we going to be looking at? And I think I have to rely on the traffic consultant to tell me.
I agree.
What, what, what his suggestion would be on that. That's a little bit over my head.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you. Um, and then back to the application, um, when we get down to the ecology of the site. And the stormwater, the groundwater, the, the, the impact on the environment there. Um, you are right, it is redeveloped land. It would be my suggestion as a member. That this board rely heavily on the Conservation Commission regarding um. Any issues at this site. Uh, they are in a much better position, especially considering the redevelopment aspect of this. So Bill, as you know, our zoning bylaws require that the Conservation Commission provide. Um, a review and one of three different documents as a uh, to this board, to the planning board before we can vote. So um, I'll ask the board members if they have any specific concerns that they would like to see addressed. In terms of um, environmental impact at this site that. They want this board to address as opposed to uh, the Conservation Commission.
I have none.
I have none. Let them do their job.
Yeah, I, I agree. Okay, um. Bill, would it be possible to get um, an updated, um. Help me with the word, the, the pictures that you shoot, that you showed last meeting.
The renderings?
Yeah, thank you. God, I just, I just wouldn't come out. The, the renderings, could we, could we get a digital version of those so we could share them on the website for people to look at?
Um, sure. I don't see any reason why not. I can, uh, I gotta try to figure out how to, how to get it in that format for you. But I'm sure we can s- we can sort that out. I think they're going to be pretty similar to, to the ones that we did originally. I'll see if we can update that to reflect the way the building, you know, the, the minor changes to the building that we've made, to, that we've made. Somebody else took care of that um, element of the work. So I'll, I'll have to, I have to look into that one, Richard. So I'm happy to do so.
Great. Um. In looking, in looking at Charlie's report, his initial report. Um, I don't see a whole lot of issues there. Charlie, do you have any feedback that you'd care to give after hearing Bill walk through that?
I do. Uh, could you put sheet four back up on the screen, please?
Yep, you're one sec. Just let me know where you want to look, Charlie.
Uh, just move it up a little bit, right there. Um, that's good. Right where we got it. Just a. I'm looking at the parking again.
Um, and I was thinking about something as I was um. Uh, listening to Bill's comments and so forth. And the first one I'll deal with would be that northerly driveway, which he's got labeled on the plan. It's right there where the arrow is at twenty feet wide. In my first letter, I said that it was a choke point. It's not a choke point at Main Street. It's a choke point where you enter and leave the actual aisle that's in the parking. And I'll use my own personal experience up here in West Wareham at the Dunkin' Donuts site. That entrance on forty eight is a twenty four foot wide space. It also has parking exactly like this at the very head of the entrance where you come in. And up there, uh, at the Dunkin' Donuts site, you have people approaching that access point from the left. You also have people approaching that access point from the right, so that when anyone tries to come in. It's a real hassle to get people to make the turn in the proper ways. So that people in that access road can make their turn and get out of the way of traffic that is in twenty eight. The exact same thing is going to happen here, especially with a narrowed entrance. So it's not the radius point of twenty five feet onto Main Street that is the problem. It's the fact that it's not wide enough when you would try to get into the aisle spaces between the parking spaces that are on the plan. That's why I'm suggesting it needs to be twenty four at least in order to make it a little easier for people to get in there. And get in that aisle. So I'm, I'm adamant about the twenty four feet. I realize that you might lose a space. Um, maybe there's a way of adjusting it a little bit here and there. But I, I think you really need to do that. Uh, and they, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go, you go ahead. I'm sorry. Give me.
The second thing has to do with the, with the dumpsters. And what I was thinking about before making comment, I was going to ask if there was any opportunity. To slide the building to the left a little bit. But the way you have your sidewalk and the number of parking spaces that are there, um, it doesn't look like it's very doable. Um, my comment with respect to the parking space, no, not parking, but the dumpster area. Was not so much the width of the dumpster access point, although it is narrow. But a truck going in there to pick up either one of those containers, they try to line up in a straight line. And if you look at the loading area, which includes an enclosed stairway. Uh, the center of the dumpster on the left is within a couple of feet of the side of that stairway. The one on the right of the center line of that dumpster. You've got a, an angle coming in there and it's going to make it very difficult for the guy that's driving the truck to line up with those. Be able to get those dumpsters up out of the bins, get them loaded on his truck and then drop them back again. Is there any reason why that space couldn't utilize two dumpsters rather than three?
I think we're, I think we'll look at that to, to, to reduce that down.
It would make maneuverability in there much better, uh, if there were two or three, because then you have a little bit of flexibility with where he had to go. Uh, putting three there is a real tight spot. Uh, with respect to the thickness of the slab. If you're using six inch five thousand pound mix, uh, with welded fire fabric in there, make sure it's below the center line of the, of the uh. A slab, you should be fine.
Yeah, okay. Um. What was I going to say? Okay, I, and Charlie, I just had a question too on the lighting. You talked about, um, that we showed some lighting on. On two existing light poles. I didn't.
No, 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 they weren't on existing light poles. It, it showed that there were two proposed light poles. Uh, in the area between Main Street and the parking.
Yes.
And that shows up on the lighting plan.
No, that's right. There's actually four.
Okay, I only saw two out there because they were sort of depressed. They were in the background. Uh, but clearly, yeah, we need, we need an idea as to what those uh, light poles will look like. And if they are on concrete pedestals, they need to be set back at least two feet from the edge of the parking area so people won't be bumping into them.
Exactly, and that's why we tried to line them up on, on a, on a, on a pavement stripe. So that hopefully people would park, you know, try to get their car in the center of a stall and not hit things, but.
They don't always, but it.
They don't always work that way. No, that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, well, I just need to. Guy wire. Um, yeah, I agree that it has to be up to the electric company to decide how they're going to handle that guy wire. But the way it's right now, uh, it's counteracting the pull from the poles across the street. So to put the guy wire on an angle. It's going to help one line, but it may not help the other. So you're going to have to work that out with them. I understand that.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, those were my main comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um, Bill, one, one suggestion from a, from a novice is, is I. Regarding your dumpsters, I talked to your trash company and asked them, they probably have guidelines. That will give you some pretty good ideas of what your dimension requirements are for them to get in and out of there. But just a thought.
Yeah, no, we've, um, I, I haven't done that on this one, but I, I know that um. We. That they normally try to get these guys to do all their pickups like at five or six o'clock in the morning or very early in the morning. Uh, before the, before the restaurant opens. So we'll see if we can figure out who, who the trash pickup company might be. And what their schedule would be and, and go from there. I will work on that.
Okay, um, board members questions?
I'm good.
Alright.
I don't have a question. I have a comment though, Richard.
Please.
I'm not all concerned with the traffic. Anywhere you go in Wareham in the summertime, it's an issue. Swift Beach, go to onset. It's an issue. If somewhere Wareham, somewhere Wareham, it's going to be traffic. I don't think it's a big deal. I don't think, I wouldn't want to study. I would vote no against that. I just don't think it's warranted. My only comment.
Would you, would you feel better if I did actually have a vote on the request?
No.
Okay.
I know where to end up, Richard.
Okay, at the, at the board's pleasure, I'll open this up for public input now. Um, I will now open the public hearing for public comment. Please keep in mind the purpose of the public hearing is for citizens to have an opportunity. Opportunity to provide input to the board on a project being considered. Comments are limited to three minutes, which can be extended by the chair. The public is requested to bring only new information to the board's consideration and not to repeat information that has already been provided. Questions from the public must be directed to the chair who will determine if the question is appropriate. And if so, is there a spokesman to answer it? It is not the purpose of the public hearing for the board to educate the public on the law. Or to provide legal opinion. Aaron, we have Mr. Enos. I see his hand up.
Yep, good to go.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, uh, Ron Enos, Seven Burgess Point Road. Um, actually, I'm, I'm attending this in, in support of the project. I think this is a tremendous project for this town. Um, I've been a resident of Wareham for most of my adult life. And I, believe me, I've seen some positive and not so positive projects in our downtown area. Um, and I do think that this is a very positive one. Um. You know, our downtown is, is, is actually a very quaint downtown that I think, um. I know people that come to visit me, go through downtown and they say, boy, it has so much potential. And I think this helps our potential and this piece of parcel. I mean, this parcel of land was, was vacant for so many years and, and really just an eyesore to the town. And I think with um, with um, Mr. Warren having the plan to do something like this. And, and the actual resources is, has a very uh, positive impact in our, our waterfront and our downtown area. Um, you know, I, I've attended many, many meetings, a, a, a meeting many, many years ago. And in that meeting, there was a, an investor that wanted to put a Marina in behind downtown. And just think what this town would have been like had that happened. Unfortunately, it was turned down at that time. And I think it would have been a completely different downtown and a very vibrant downtown at that. So I, you know, I would like to have, you know, have this board really take into consideration. The positive impact that this will have on our town. And I think Mr. Warren has um, has done a great job and has put a lot of resources into it already. And I've been following this as we've gone along. And I really think this is a very, very positive uh, thing for our town. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Enos. Uh, I think Ms. Words would like to make a comment, Aaron.
Yep, she's up next.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, thank you again. Mr. Warren, it's very nice to meet you if it's only via Zoom. Um, I'm in the middle of doing a um, study on Wareham Village for the WRA. And one of the groups that I had um, a substantial session with were people who were a group of people. Who live in that Pinehurst um, neighborhood down behind where you're going to be building. So first of all, let me say I'm very positive about the um, project. I want to see it go through. But what I will tell you is the people in that Pinehurst neighborhood are already concerned about traffic. Um, because of the pot store and the things that are happening to them. They basically only have two ways to get out of their um, neighborhood. So I think the um, I think the traffic study would be a big help. Um, because it can also tell the town where they may need to put um, directional lights, traffic lights. Or whatever to help that neighborhood and still be able to have that development there and very healthy. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, Aaron?
Oh, um, yeah, someone, whoever's raising their hand right now, just state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Jack Nolan. I live at Seventeen Narrows Road in Wareham.
Yep, you can speak now.
Thank you. I'd like to speak in favor of the project. Um, and I've known Danny Warren for a great number of years. Like since he was twenties, in his twenties, and I was in my thirties. I know he had a, a successful restaurant back there by routes twenty eight and fifty eight. Uh, was well received. I knew him personally, uh, when he lived near me in the Tremont. Village area, Tremont Dam, Mill Street. Uh, and uh uh Danny ran, when I had a successful auction in the seventies, an antique auction in in Tremont Village, uh Danny handled the snack bar for me. And uh to my business, it was very important that I could hold customers. So it wasn't more, it was more than a snack bar. I had to, and I ran the auction on Saturday night, so I needed people to come and get their dinner. And instead of leaving to go to a restaurant, I had to hold the the people there and uh was was quite successful at doing that. Uh, I like to say that that I I know Danny has uh been successful in a number of projects and and I think the major point I wish to make is that I'm pretty confident that he's going to be successful. Uh, we don't need a a grand project that is unsuccessful. Um, so it's, and I understand he's well funded. So I think he has the capability. I think he has the talent. He has the the track record. And um I'm confident he'll be successful. And and therefore, I wanted to say something uh that I was in favor of the project. And that's
Thank you very much. I appreciate your input. Any other input tonight?
Um, no one has their hand raised.
I will, I will close the public input session of this of this hearing then. Um I think looking at where we need to go, the list of things to do here, we've got a little bit uh to work on between um GAF engineering and Mr. Rowley on their report, making sure that those are buttoned up. I I don't see a whole lot of uh problem there. Um, uh, we'll see a traffic study. We'll see some elevation rendering drawings or some rendering drawings. Um, it's nice to see uh support for a project, I have to say.
I was, I was gonna, I was gonna make a comment, Richard, and say that out of both boards I've been to, I don't think I've ever seen a that many people in favor with no one not in favor in a row at the planning board, but
Okay.
Could I, could I say something, please?
Uh, Mr. Warren, please go ahead.
Uh I was amazed myself that over a course of less than two weeks, a couple of the other restaurants in town followed a thing around for people in favor to sign. And they gathered over six hundred signatures in less than two weeks. And my phone was ringing every night, saying, is this really going to happen? Uh, my phone continues to ring, uh people saying, please don't give up, don't don't get disgusted. Um, I understand the parking situation and the traffic situation. And it's a that's, 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 that's got potential to have us all worried, including me. And I definitely want to do this, but if it's going to be a situation that I, the high hope was that the marijuana shop was moving out of town. I was, I was told they were going to move down by Walmart. Well, they didn't. They moved two doors down. I mean, that is the problem in that community. Whether I'm there, somebody else is there, or no one's there. That is going to continue to be a problem in that community. So that's, that's all I want to say. I guess I'm saying thank you to all the people wareham that showed so much favor for it. But it's, it's got everybody's concern at this point.
All right, thank you for that, Mr. Warren.
Yeah.
Um, I would accept a motion to continue this public hearing to February fourteenth, and this is for project thirty-nine dash twenty-one site plan review of fifty-nine Main Street. I have a motion. Second, I have a motion by Mr. Schultz, uh second by Mr. King to continue this public hearing to two fourteen. Uh, Mr. King.
Hi.
Mr. Baptiste.
Hi.
Mr. Schultz.
Hi.
Mr. Corbett. Mr. Corbett. Did I
Sorry about that. Aye.
Aye, and Mr. Swenson votes aye. The hearing is continued to the fourteenth. We know what we need to do there. Um, moving on, anyone for yes, sir.
Before we move to the next section, and you could tell me I'm in the wrong place, um going back to section four for the um continued public hearings, um I think we want comment from Mr. Bowen. Do we need to authorize uh Mr. Buckland to request Mr. Bowen?
No, we are, we went, we went through that. Uh, Mr. Buckland can do it based on the vote we we took.
No, that was on a different hearing, though.
It wasn't.
I thought it was.
This was on going to miss all right, you're you were right in that um Mr. Buckland is going to request Mr. Bowen to get involved with Betsy and uh zero uh zero maples, no, not zero maple.
Route twenty-five.
Robin Hood Road.
Yeah, thank you. Um
And that's what ping, that's what pinged me. Do we need to authorize Mr. Bowen on those other ones?
Uh, Mr. Buckland, um I, we're already engaged with Mr. Bowen on this. He's been waiting for us to we've been waiting on him. Mr. Buckland, do we need a town administrator approval to have him review the covenant? Do we have, should we have a vote to cover our our rear ends here?
I don't, I don't think uh Ken is, Ken is here, but um I would say just do it anyway. I don't think it hurts to have the vote. Um, then you're covered.
All right, I'm going to back up then to number four, continued public hearing special review regarding uh request from this board to request Mr. Bowen to formally review the covenant template that he's been provided. Uh, will someone make that motion, please?
Oh, still move.
And second. And I have a motion by Mr. Schultz, a second by Mr. Corbett. Mr. King.
Hi.
Mr. Baptiste.
Hi.
Mr. Schultz.
Hi.
Mr. Corbett.
Hi.
Mr. Swenson votes aye, five zero zero. Mr. Mr. Schultz, thank you for that. That was a, that was a good catch. Uh, public comment on master plan, any, any want to speak tonight? Seeing none, I'm moving on. Any, any liaison updates from solar bylaw committee, Carl?
Uh, we are working um aggressively to meet the uh the timeline for submission. Uh, if we can get done, we will bring uh updates to Article Three. Uh, the use table updates to Section five ninety, uh which is the solar bylaw and um updates to Section sixteen, which are definitions. Uh, I'm not sure we're going to make it.
Okay. Mr. Corbett, community preservation or capital planning?
Uh, capital planning, first meeting this Wednesday. Uh, CPC have one meeting uh proposed purchase of the country club was brought up, quite a lot of comments. Uh, bringing it up again as well as new applications for funds from the CPC. It should be an interesting evening.
Uh, Mr. King, anything from Serpette?
Uh, nothing tonight, but we do have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday to have a comment on at our next meeting.
Aaron, any staff report issues you'd care to talk to?
Uh, none for me. When I have some more time, maybe I'll have some more of those, but as of now, everything's going the way it's it's going.
Do we have no referrals? Uh, member comments before we adjourn? Uh, Mr. King, any comments?
Uh, none at this time.
Mr. Baptiste.
Oh, totally app.
Say, uh, Sam, you have any comments?
Not this time.
Carl?
Uh, request to you, Mr. Chairman, would you prefer that I hold off on my request for that bylaw update until you have a chance to review it?
Yes, please.
Okay, then I will, I will hold off.
Can we talk tomorrow?
Yeah, no, no, that's why. I didn't want to bring it up if you weren't ready.
I'm not ready. Okay, I would take a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Corbett and a second by Mr. King to adjourn. Mr. King.
Hi.
Mr. Baptiste.
Hi.
Mr. Corbett.
Hi.
Mr. Schultz.
Hi.
Mr. Swenson votes aye, five zero zero. We are adjourned. Thank you very much. Got a lot done tonight. Thank you.